Okay, I think we're ready to begin.
Yes, Jeff, please begin recording. Before we begin our agenda, we have a presentation by Stella Kim on the POPS signage rule change.
Good afternoon.
If I could just preface Stella's presentation by noting that POPS have been a fixture in our landscape for a long while. And the, I want to thank our colleagues on the City Council. They passed a piece of legislation calling for us to pay a lot more attention to how we presented information about POPS so that the public would feel empowered to know what they could anticipate. And that led to a lot of work by the department, led by Stella, and this is the culmination of that work. And so I think it shows how one relatively small, some could say a minor, piece of legislation bears a lot of positive fruit.
Great, thank you Director Lago. I was waiting for the presentation. Great. So, thank you for the introduction. My name is Stella Kim. I'm the Program Manager for Privately Owned Public Spaces, POPS at DCP. And today I'm here to present the departmental rule regarding POPS signage to brief the Commission. And so, we'll go over just quickly what POPS are, this local law that Chair Lago just mentioned, and our proposed departmental rule. So, POPS are spaces, public spaces on private property, provided in exchange often for bonus floor area for developers in the densest parts of our city, or they could also be, have been provided for other waivers. We have over 550 today across the boroughs, over 350 properties, and there are a variety of types, indoor and outdoor, offering all types of amenities. And they're valuable public spaces for New Yorkers and visitors alike in that they provide opportunities to sit, relax, eat lunch, people watch, just really, you know, partake in urban life here. And they are a result of city zoning regulations from 1961 to present, and they're aimed at ensuring there's light and air and open space in the busiest parts of our commercial and residential districts. And in 1960, sorry, in 2017, local law 116 was adopted that requires more city oversight on privately owned public spaces and compliance of them. And among other things, it does require all property owners to post public space signage on each of these POPS, regardless of the zoning resolution standards, and I'll jump into that in a second. And then it also, the local law also specifies that the department might, may put up a rule regarding the size, design, content, and placement of these signs. And you might have seen, walking around the city, that there are so many different POPS signs out in the world today. Since 61, again, the zoning has allowed for different types of POPS to be built, and they're all under different standards. And so, some POPS have existing signage that was required by the zoning, but for most POPS, like the plazas you see, that wasn't a requirement until 1975. So, it leaves the spaces built prior to them unidentified to the public. So, this local law fixes that problem in that it requires all POPS to now have signage. So, this is, and we're thrilled about that. That's something that we've wanted for our POPS, you know, to be valuable to the public. They should be easily identifiable and be able to be used and known by all. This is an example of our current standard today for our signage requirements, and the signs are required every 40 feet along a street frontage, posted near the sidewalk. And we explored what it would mean for property owners to use a signage standard and apply it to all the POPS in the city. And we quickly realized that this would not result in a good urban design outcome, given that POPS are so varied in nature. Some are indoor, some are outdoors, some are elevated, some are sunken, some are not close to the sidewalk edge, so to strictly apply our standards wouldn't really work. So, hence why we are putting forward this rule that grants some flexibility in applying these provisions per site. So, our goal aligns with the intent behind the local law of, again, these POPS being easily identifiable to the public by providing clear, visible, and legible signage. And the purpose of the rule itself is to give specifications on the signage, a review process, and a timeframe to comply. In terms of the signage plan, so we are requiring owners to submit a plan to us that shows the signage that they would post at their POPS, and it uses the existing standards as a guideline, but again, with the flexibility to make sure the signage makes sense for their POPS. And with that, we also want to do a few modifications for, for the signs. So, there will be a new logo for the signage, this, the logo you see with the tree on the grid, we are replacing, which I'll introduce in a second, and also, again, sensible placement number of signs. And the legislation also calls for a site map to be part of these new signs, which doesn't exist in our standards today, so we have to come up with some guidelines around that. So, this morning, DCP, along with our partners at the Municipal Art Society of New York and Advocates for Privately Owned Public Space, we are holding this international design competition for a new logo to replace the one you see here on POPS signage. So, this is, you know, ties in with this rule in that this new logo will be a visible icon that will identify all the spaces in a uniform way, will no longer have this crazy hodgepodge of different icons around the city. And so, this launched today, a panel will select up to three awardees, along with a public vote, and then Chair Lago will be able to choose one of these three awardees as the official new POPS logo. And the logo would be seen by millions every day as they walk around the city and enjoy our POPS. And so, we, we hope you can get, help get the word out, commissioners, and also, please begin sketching your own designs to enter. And so, jumping back to the rules, so the owners must submit a package for DCP to review. For POPS without any identifying signs already, they have only six months to submit this package to us. With POPS with signage, since they already are identified to the public, they might, may just need to update their sign, they have two years of effective date to submit this package. We would review this package, the signage plans, and then, once approving it, the owners have three months of approval to install the sign to comply. And syncing up our new logo design with this rule, we plan to publish this rule in the City Register around early March and hold a departmental public hearing in April. And that's around the time that our panel will be selecting the new logo. The awardees and the new logo will be announced in May. In June, we'll do a final publish of this rule with that new logo incorporated, and then, after 30 days of the final publish, the rule becomes adopted. So, this is our target schedule here. And that is it.
Questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Cirillo.
Thank you so much. Just, just a couple of quick questions. When you began, when you referenced the local law which requires signage regardless of the zoning text, and I expect I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask the question anyway, is there anything inconsistent about the new rule versus what the zoning resolution requires? The point is to ensure that there isn't confusion and without proper education, that people will think they're in compliance when in fact, they may not be in compliance. So, is there anything new about this that undoes what someone might have on a sign already, or not?
So, the answer, it depends. For the older signs, like one example of a difference is older signs that if you have a complaint about this plaza, please contact DOB or DCP. Today, our signs say, if you have a complaint about this plaza, please reference it on 311. So, that's an example where there's different instructions already out in the city, so this would require, you know, have everyone have the same message on their signs. That's one in particular that stands out. The plazas more or less have signage that resembles what we require today, but the indoor spaces and other spaces, part of like special permits, they really vary in what their signage already has or doesn't have. So, it kind of depends. Nothing is, the only really new thing is that site map that I referenced. The legislation says that any new spaces from around the time the legislation was approved in October 2017, those new spaces must have a map that references where the public space is on that property.
Okay. Do we envision that we will amend the zoning resolution with regard to POPS signage based on the local law, or is that not necessary anymore? Just to, just to create a consistency between the two, unless there's something missing that we would want to make sure we continue to require?
I think we can look at whether it is sufficiently different or confusing to warrant a rezoning.
Yeah, I mean, I just meant if, if we felt that it was important to do that, since there aren't two potential places for different rules that may or may not exist. And then, I guess the last question I have involves the time difference between, for ensuring submission to the department. Are there, do we know the, let's say, the extent to which there are POPS without any signage at all?
Yeah.
Versus, yeah.
It's about 45% of our...
No signage?
Yeah.
Interesting. It's, I know, I mean, I see them, I just didn't realize that the number was that great. And, and I'm assuming, since we know where POPS are, that the, those who are, who have jurisdiction of POPS will be directly contacted about the proposed changes in order to comment? Or is that just something we're hoping that sort of public information will get to those people?
We do, we do plan to do outreach and definitely notify the owners of the existing POPS when this comes into an effect, and we will be having a departmental hearing and a comment period for that. So, if there are comments from these property owners or other, you know, stakeholders, we can incorporate any feedback then.
Excellent, and we...
I also think that your comment makes me think that we can reach out to the business improvement districts that cover them, because they can be another effective voice.
That's exactly, I was just going to say, in closing, that I can think of different organizations that would be able to do direct outreach to ensure that the greatest number of people who would have interest over POPS and their operation could weigh in on this, you know, including the community boards, of course. Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Levin.
Well, I guess, feeding off of that, and particularly realizing that when you say there are 45% of POPS currently have no signage, first off, I think it's, this is great to standardize this and to make these, I mean, this is a good thing to be doing, but it's, it's a big undertaking to get it to happen. Are you, you're looking at reviewing 550 applications to get proper signage? That's a big project, right?
Yeah, it's something we're willing to take on and accept it to take on, because we think the signage is really, you know, important.
Because I'm wondering also if you're, it's been my experience with some POPS that I was involved in helping create, you know, as part of being a community advocate some time ago. The thing gets built, the building changes hands, no one remembers that that spot is supposed to be POPS, it never gets the furniture that it's supposed to get, it just becomes abandoned dead space. There's a whole enforcement aspect to it that kind of has slipped between the cracks in the city. So, I'm wondering, I'm expecting that part of the implementation process will lead you to uncovering a number of other issues related to, you know, to ensure that all these POPS are functioning as they should be. Is this a new enforcement world and, for, for POPS? Can we look forward to improve conditions, getting all these guys to be doing what they really are supposed to be doing anyway?
Yeah, the, the local law 116 actually, so it has some oversight requirements for DCP, but then also on the inspection side, all POPS will be inspected annually, and the signage will just help, you know, as someone in the space, a passerby user, to know what's there, what's not, and also, in your scenario of a building's changing hands, if you have a sign onsite saying this is a public space, it will just register something.
And it's supposed to have, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, good. And so, that enforcement process is going to be within city planning? Who's, who's doing the annual inspections?
That's DOB.
DOB is doing the inspections? Oh, okay.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
Where will the site plan be filed, for, under the new law?
The signage plans?
Yeah.
They will be, you know, sent to DCP for us to approve, and then we'd send a copy over to DOB, so they also have it as well.
Is there, I mean, especially though with, under the new law, given the requirement for the site plan, is there any value in having that publicly available on ACRIS?
POPS website?
Yeah.
We have our POPS website.
Right, okay, so that'll do it.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we've, we put out a map last year of all our POPS, and something we're looking to do as like an enhancement is to put up photos and drawings of the POPS space itself, so that'd be a good place to, to put these site plans.
If I may, I mean, obviously, that's, that's very, very helpful from someone who's trying to find a POP, let's say, but I guess I'm trying to also think about the Commissioner Levin's question about when, when properties change hands and ensuring that the requirement is understood for the new owner.
We can look into, I don't, I don't think we've explored any kind of legal filing, it's just been a signage plan with DCP, but something we can explore.
And then, again, with a new owner, the fact that it is visibly displayed on the property, well, should make quite a difference.
Right, again, I'm just, I'm just thinking about all the different requirements that are part of it, not just the sign.
And having those be publicly visible and available, it'd be great if there was like a little page you could go to and figure out what each site, each POP is supposed to have.
Yeah, the, the map does that already.
Does it?
It's not just the locations, it says the size, the type of space, the required amenities, the hours, so that's all online, and then the sign itself will announce all these, all this information as well.
The number of benches, the number of trees, there's quite detailed information. Yes, Commissioner Twack.
Are we going to be assured that DOB will, in fact, do the annual inspections on the POPS?
I don't know, I mean, they're charged with, with the local law.
It's a legal requirement.
Yeah, so...
And with a City Council that is quite focused on the POPS, I will note that the POPS are not just located in Manhattan, many of them are, and we anticipate a lot of interest in this international design competition, because it's a chance to have the work displayed on some of our most iconic locations throughout the city. Yes, Commissioner Muddin.
I have a question. I'm wondering if maybe, you know, as homeowners, you receive yearly reminders of some of the local laws and some of the requirements by HPD that you are to maintain as a homeowner. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe a, a notice can go out to, to building owners that, this is your POPS, you should maintain it, here is a document that documents how many trees, you know, chairs, benches you have, want to make sure you are aware of the fact that you must maintain your POPS. I mean, is that, is that a poss...
That's something we could explore. Again, the signage, as Commissioner Levin points out, with having the signage and that that kind of information needed on your signage, I think it will inherently bring out some of this, these compliances that might be existing in these, non-compliances have been existing in these spaces, so I'm, I'm sure those conversations will be happening as we talk about, actually, you have these four trees that are required, that's something that should be on your sign, and if they don't have them, then we'd address those issues then.
One of them died, you might replace it?
Yeah.
I would also note that the majority of these are with major landowners, not with a homeowner who might not be as aware of the obligations.
I do realize that, but I also, I also piggyback on Commissioner Levin's concern about building changing hands, and then the owner not being too savvy, you know, this is just a real estate deal for them, and you have to know what you're getting into, and some folks don't. So, it's, it's, it would be wise to then just send a refresher reminder, hey, you, you have a POPS, these are your obligations, and this is what you should be doing.
What I might suggest is that if we realize as it's implemented that this continues to be a problem, I actually hesitate to put an annual reporting or mailing out requirement, particularly since this is so much focused on having signage right there.
See how I can...
Yeah. Other questions? Okay, so what we are going to do is we will be referring this out to all community boards where there is a POPS for 30 days. And what the referral is, is obviously of the rulemaking. Yes, Commissioner Edie.
Sorry, there's one question that I did have that I hesitated. I assume the need for the POPS is somewhat, in, somewhere in one of the recorded documents, either as a zoning requirement or something, that any landlord buying a property during their due diligence, the title company would pick up. Am I incorrect?
Yeah, they should.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No, I think that that is a backstop. The challenge is, with respect to those POPS that were authorized before we had these types of requirements, will now, for the first time, be subject to this. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Kate Lemus-McHale of the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
It'll, it'll come up.
Okay. Here we go.
There it is.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lago and Commissioners, I'm Kate Lemus-McHale, Director of Research at the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to present the recently designated Park Terrace West, West 217th Street Historic District. Located in Inwood, near the northern tip of Manhattan, the district consists of a picturesque enclave of 15 early 20th century Tudor and colonial revival style houses. Its appealing character and historic significance is created by its uniform scale, architectural styles, and consistency of building materials combined with an emphasis on landscaped gardens. The district was identified as part of the Commission's work in Inwood through our survey work, and also, more recently, in conjunction with the rezoning to identify historic preservation opportunities in the neighborhood. It was calendared in September of, of 2018, and we had a public hearing on November 20th. And at that public hearing, we had quite a lot of testimony in support. We had eight people speak in favor of designation, including representatives of Manhattan Community Board 12, the New York Landmarks Conservancy, Historic Districts Council, the Park Terrace Block Association, and property owners within the district. We also received letters of support from Congressman Adriano Espiatt and the Office of the Borough President. And we have had very positive interactions with owners in this district. The very small historic district extends along the north side of West 217th Street, along Park Terrace West, as shown in this map. It's a cohesive grouping of two-story brick houses that's surrounded by early 20th century apartment buildings and nearby parks. More commonly seen in other boroughs, these freestanding and semi-detached houses reflect the time period when they were built, using land that had been part of large estates in the northernmost tip of Manhattan. And just to take you quickly through some of our research and analysis for the district, the topography of Inwood has played an important role in its history and in the development history and physical character of the historic district. Shown in this 1836 topographical map, Inwood's hills were the location of Revolutionary War era forts. Its valleys and plateaus were farmed, quarried, and later became vast estates. And King Ridge Road, now Broadway, you can see running diagonally through this map, linked it to lower Manhattan. Inwood was historically known as Tubby Hook until 1864, and initially, the land on which the historic district was developed was part of the Isaac and Michael Dykman Farm. In 1851, this land was divided, and a 26-acre parcel was sold to John Ferris Seaman and his wife, Anne Drake Seaman. The Seaman Estate is shown in these maps, in the top, in the dash line and the dot. And as you can see in the 1885 map on the right, the city began to develop around the edges of these vast estates in the late 19th century, leaving their development history somewhat different and special in this area. Upon Anne Drake Seaman's death in 1878, the property was left to a nephew, Lawrence Drake. He divided the bulk of the property into lots, which were sold to developers. This is a 1900 map, so we don't see any development there yet. You do see the Seaman-Drake house was still there, and actually, it stood until 1937. With the arrival of public transit to this area began more development. First, we have the IRT subway lines in 1906, and later, the IND subway in 1920. In addition, the creation of two neighborhood parks, Isham Park, which was a gift from Julia Ish and Taylor in 1911, and Inwood Hill Park, created by the city in 1916, provided public amenities that drew developers and new residents to the area. The historic district was developed with detached and semi-detached houses in the 1920s and 30s, and larger, as larger apartment buildings were being constructed elsewhere in the neighborhood. By 1934, as you can see in this map, most of the houses had been built in the historic district, and the Seaman-Drake mansion actually was still there as well. That was the last portion of the estate to be developed. This is a 1937 aerial view, just showing basically the same thing. You can see the, the scale of the buildings pointed out with orange arrows here that are included in the district. And so, it does have a sort of suburban quality and architectural character that's not seen really in this neighborhood or really in Manhattan. In our analysis, as you can see in this map, the district consists of houses along West 217th Street and Park Terrace West, where the two streets intersect, designed in the colonial revival and Tudor revival styles in the 1920s and early 30s. In terms of historic integrity, these houses are very much intact. Minor alterations include replacement of windows, minor changes to facade materials such as reciting of dormers and the like. The picturesque, picturesque streetscapes have a high level of integrity and possess a special character and sense of place, defined by the house's uniform scale, use of similar period styles and materials, and similar setbacks from the street with gardens accentuating the topography. Just some slides showing the variety of buildings along Park Terrace West. These are the earliest houses in the district, constructed in 1921. Their colonial revival and their overall appearance, and they also have craftsman features, including textured brick and stressed horizontality with the porches. Down the hill, we have this group of three, also colonial revival overall with craftsman features, and they have intact craftsman doors and decorative tile at the entries. Along West 217th Street, we have a row of all Tudor revival style houses. These were designed by Benjamin F. V. Dreisler, Louis Kurtz, and C. G. de Niergaard, and constructed between 1933 and '35 as speculative properties. The Tudor revival style is evident in their steep gables, half-timbering, prominent chimneys, and turret-enclosed entries, and a lot of these houses were designed to mirror each other across shared driveway. Influenced by the early 20th century modern car culture, all of these houses were built with garages, either in the basement or as separate buildings at the rear of the lot. The houses are set back from the street with gardens, retaining walls, and pathways that are influenced by the topography. Unusual for Manhattan, the small historic district reflects the popularity of many suburban qualities, along with convenient access to Manhattan. And at the time that the district was built, this area of Inwood was advertised as country living in the city. So, to conclude, the Park Terrace West 217th Street Historic District is a picturesque enclave of residential architecture that ill... enclave of residential architecture that illustrates the popularity of revivalist styles used for residential developments in the 1920s and 30s. It retains a high level of integrity and exhibits a strong sense of place. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Lemus-McHale? The one question I had is, there's a carve-out. What kind of building is there?
It is, you can just see it on this slide, the picture on the left. It's a taller apartment building. And so this district was really just to capture these two-story houses.
Great. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to officially start our agenda, this is the review session of the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, January 28, 2019, and the time is 1:33. The first item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a historic district designation in Manhattan Community District 12. Our presenter is Joseph Hennickens.
So, good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'll just be going through some additional information on the land use and zoning of the proposed district that you just heard about and the surrounding area. So the district would be comprised of 15 properties on the northeast side of West 217th Street and the northwest side of Park Terrace West. It's located in the sort of far tip of Manhattan, in Inwood, Community District 12. The site is zoned entirely R7A, and that is a result of the Inwood rezoning, which was approved by City Council in August of last year. R7A is a contextual district with a maximum FAR of four and a maximum building height of eight stories. An R7D C24 district is located just south of the project area along Broadway. And the C44D Commercial District and M11 and M31 Manufacturing Districts are located across Broadway. As you can see here, the proposed district is characterized by single-family and semi-detached homes that are built to a much lower FAR than what is allowed by zoning. By contrast, the surrounding buildings are mostly contextual seven-to-nine-story mid-rise apartment houses, more typical of an R7A district. Columbia University's Baker Field is located just north of the proposed district, as is a branch of New York Presbyterian Hospital. And the elevated one-train trestle is located above Broadway. So as you heard from Landmarks Preservation Commission, the proposed district contains an intact concentration of early 20th century architecture in a suburban style unusual for Manhattan. On the basis of this architectural significance, the LPC has found that the proposed district holds a unique historical value to the city of New York and proposes its designation as a historic district. The Department of City Planning is not aware of any conflicts between the proposed district and the zoning resolution, projected public improvements, or any plans for development, growth, improvement, or renewal in the area involved. Pursuant to the city charter, the City Planning Commission is asked to submit a report to the City Council with respect to the proposed district. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, so we will hear this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
The second item on the agenda, page 65, is a referral of a citywide text amendment. Our presenter is Kyoshi Yamazaki.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Today, I'm here to present our proposal, text amendment proposal. The title for the proposal is Residential Tower Mechanical Void. And I will go through the project background, study findings, as well as our proposal. Do we have PowerPoint coming?
You have to go forward a little bit.
Yeah, this is last.
With a clicker, you'll have to go forward.
No, it's not. Jeff, it's a different presentation. There we go.
No, I'm afraid the one I have up on my screen is the next one, the manner products.
Did you put it in the?
It should be there.
And unfortunately, it is a presentation that is very visual, where the visuals help a lot.
Yes.
We have it on, those of us who brought our laptops.
We have it. We can share. I can share.
But that doesn't help the public.
Right. No, and we are simulcasting, so I think it would make sense, with your indulgence, just to wait a moment. There it is. It's up on my screen now.
There you go.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you so much for your patience. So again, I'm going to go through the project background, study findings, and then final proposal. So New York City zoning resolution currently allows mechanical floors to be excluded from zoning floor area calculations. There are no explicit height limits on those spaces. In recent years, some developments utilize excessively tall mechanical floors so that upper-story residential units are located above the surrounding context. Mayor DiBellaio asked DCP to examine the issue of excessive mechanical voids and provide a recommendation. DCP conducted a citywide analysis of recent construction to better understand the mechanical needs of residential buildings and to assess where and when those excessive mechanical spaces are being used. We also contacted a number of building construction professionals to make sure we understand the needs for residential towers correctly. The citywide study, this is basically new building permits issued between 2007 and 2018 in R6 through R10 medium and high-density non-contextual districts. The first part is R6 through R8 district, which the height is being controlled by the sky exposure plane. And there were over 700 buildings in the study area, and the department found no example of excessive mechanical spaces in these districts. We believe that this is primarily due to the existing regulations that generally limit the overall height of buildings through the use of sky exposure planes, as well as, as I said, our bulk regulations. The second part of the study is R9 and R10 residential tower districts. In those districts, residential towers are permitted, and they can penetrate the sky exposure plane. There were about 80 new residential buildings in the study area. And in the study area, most residential towers exhibited consistent configuration of mechanical floors that ranged between 10 feet to 25 feet in height. However, there were several buildings that utilized visibly excessively tall mechanical spaces. The height of those spaces ranged between approximately 80 feet to 190 feet in the aggregate. Based on the study, we established typical tower configurations. The example to the left is 281 Fifth Avenue in Manhattan, which is under construction. A typical tower has an amenity space, no, I'm sorry, mechanical floor at a lower level, typically in between non-residential floors and residential floors. Taller towers typically has an additional mechanical floor to every 20 stories or so. Larger mechanical bulkheads are provided on the top of the building. The next two examples are city-sponsored residential towers. The example to the left is HPD's Center of Body Proposal that was reviewed and approved by the City Planning Commission about a year ago as part of the Isalem Res zoning proposal. So this tower, as you can see, has cellular mechanical space and two additional mechanical floors in the middle of the tower that is evenly distributed and has a larger mechanical space on the top of the building. So this is net zero sustainable design buildings, and it exhibits mechanical space that is consistent with the typical residential tower configurations we established. The example to the right is the same, similar HPD's development in downtown Brooklyn, 250 Ashland Place. As you can see, this tower conforms to the typical tower configuration we just went through. Next few slides shows the towers that exhibited excessive mechanical spaces. So the example in front of you is 36 West 66th Street, which is proposed in C47 district in Lincoln Square Special District. As you can see in the diagram to the right, it has 160-foot-tall mechanical space in the middle of the tower, right above 150 feet measured from the curb level. The next example is 15 East 30th Street, which is under construction. As you can see, it has three floors of mechanical spaces right above the ground floor residential lobby, and the total height of the mechanical space is 132 feet. If you see the right diagram, it shows the existing buildings and the mechanical spaces provided to exceed the height of the residential building on the same block. In conclusion, in R6 through R8 non-contextual zoning districts and their commercial equivalent districts, there were no examples of excessively tall mechanical spaces in the area. In R9 and R10 non-contextual zoning districts and their commercial equivalents, where residential towers are permitted, most towers exhibited consistent configurations of mechanical floors. However, there are several residential towers that contained extremely tall mechanical spaces. So based on the study findings, we came up with the following text amendment proposal. First and foremost, we would like to meet the following goals. So we're here to limit the use of artificially tall residential mechanical voids. We would like to encourage residential buildings that activate and engage with their surroundings. At the same time, we would have to recognize the needs for reasonably sized and distributed mechanical spaces in residential buildings for good functioning of the building. And finally, we'd like to continue to support the flexibility of design, bulk flexibility for design excellence in those districts. So what we would address, so example to the left, which shows one contiguous mechanical space on the bottom of the tower, we would like to address the issue. The middle diagram shows 150-foot mechanical void in the middle of the tower. We would address the issue. The final diagram shows multiple mechanical floors that is divided by usable spaces but concentrated in one section of a building. This would be our basic rule. We would modify the residential tower floor area provisions in zoning resolution section 23-16 to count mechanical voids that exceed the height of 25 feet as zoning floor area. Mechanical penthouses above the highest residential floors would not be subject to this regulation. So example to the right, which contains three stories, 130 feet in total mechanical space, we require the space to be divided by 25 feet, so 132 divided by 25 equals 5.2. So we round the number to the nearest integer. So in this example, the mechanical space would be counted as five floors of zoning floor area, which is a very significant floor area for development to spend, since they have limited floor area available already. The second part of the proposal is about the clustering. So how we address clustering rule is by requiring mechanical floors that are located within 75 feet of each other to be counted as zoning floor area. So example to the right, it has four floors of mechanical voids that are concentrated in the lower section of the building. So the total height of the mechanical space is 80 feet, and that number divided by 25 is 3.2. So rounded to the nearest integer is three floors. So the development would lose three floors worth of residential floor area. Finally, for mixed-use buildings, non-residential mechanical spaces would also be subject to the same 20-foot, 75-foot rule if non-residential floor spaces occupy less than 25 feet of a building. The example to the right, this is Mount Sinai Medical School, which has a quite substantial number of amount of non-residential floor. Here, it's specifically a medical research facility. And the portion of the building highlighted in the red is mechanical space. It's quite significantly sized, but the most of the mechanical space is actually serving the several floors of medical research facility in the bottom of the building. So only the small portion of the mechanical space is serving the residential portion of the tower. So in conclusion, or to summarize, we would modify residential tower floor area provisions in zoning resolution to count mechanical voids that are taller than 25 feet as zoning floor area. If residential mechanical voids are located within 75 feet of each other, they would all count as zoning floor area, regardless of the height of each floor or the fact that they are divided into multiple pieces. For mixed-use buildings, non-residential mechanical spaces would also be subject to our regulation if non-residential uses occupy less than 25% of a building. So after implementing this proposal, we would anticipate that developers would utilize less of mechanical space and conform to our standard typical residential tower typology. Finally, where those regulations would apply. So we are looking at residential tower developments located within non-contextual R9 and R10 districts and their commercial equivalents. Special districts that rely on the underlying floor area and the tower height regulations would also be subject to this regulation. Such special districts include Special Lincoln Square District and Union Square Special District. This proposal would also include portions of Special Clinton District and Special West Chelsea District, which has special tower regulations. So this is the end of the presentation.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Ron Fershaw.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a question. I know you said during the analysis portion, you had several building professionals. Have you guys reached out to the AIA or the New York State Society of Professional Engineers for their input?
Yes, we've been in touch with practitioners and representing organizations so that we understand, well, the same time we want to regulate the mechanical spaces, we want to make sure that we wouldn't impede the potential, you know, potential growth or future development of mechanical spaces. So we've been in touch with those professional organizations.
And just one follow-up question. With regards to the seven buildings that you mentioned that was excessive tall mechanical spaces, have you reached out to the applicant who designed those buildings to find out why they utilize that much mechanical space? Because I know with the higher rises, you have to do things in certain zones, so, you know, it may be required to do.
We are in touch with construction field professionals. We were indirectly in touch with those developers when it is feasible. We were indirectly in touch with those developers when it is feasible.
I would also note that we have seen these in generally smaller footprint luxury high rises with a relatively small number of units. We were particularly sensitive to the high-rise affordable housing buildings, which generally have far more units per floor and higher air handling or mechanical needs. And none of those buildings would have triggered this rule were it in effect. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
So I'm pleased to see this rule moving forward. I know it's been a topic on many people's minds for, for some time. There just seems to be something odd about a manipulation of the zoning resolution in a way that allows people to monetize the sky, which really belongs to all of us. I'm curious why, I would have thought intuitively that this would apply to some sites in downtown Brooklyn or in Queens, Long Island City, where we're seeing a lot more high-density development. Some of those, I think, are R10 or R8 or R10, if not residential zones, residential, commercial zones with residential equivalents. Why, why are there so few spots on the map outside of Manhattan?
Okay, sure, yes. We've been talking about potential restrictions in central business districts, like downtown Brooklyn, Long Manhattan, Hudson Yard, Midtown, and Long Island City. We seem, we believe that they have a little different context than the areas where we are looking at and included as part of this proposal. However, the city has, as Mayor DeBrazio and Chair Lago promised to the public back in December, we are actively looking into what kind of regulation would be appropriate in those central business districts.
That's phase two of the work that we're doing, but we did not, our original charge was to look at high-density residential districts. Your question, a very legitimate question, has been raised. We are now looking at central business districts. As Kiyoshi mentioned, different contexts, different considerations. But we did not see value in holding this proposal up as we continue to do the additional research and evaluation.
Okay, well, you actually just answered the question I was about to, that was going to be my follow-up question, which is about its applicability to commercial properties. But aren't there also some residential developments at the R8, R10 scale?
We.
R9, R10 scale that would be captured by this in, say, downtown Brooklyn? Or is, do those have height limits or some other reason that they are not covered by the text that you have proposed?
So downtown Brooklyn has its own special floor area regulation, as well as special height and setback or tower regulations.
So they get to the same outcome without using this text?
They would have to have special provision within the chapter to be subject to similar type of regulation. However, our finding is that we, you know, the context, build the context of those central business districts are a little different from the area where we, where we are actually looking, those like, you know, proposals coming up, like Upper East Side, West Side, and, you know, North of Madison area, where those techniques are being utilized.
Yeah, no, I fully appreciate, we ought to do what we can today, you know, not let the perfect get in the way of the possible here. But I also submit that we're seeing this stuff because at the time the zoning resolution was drafted to say that mechanical space didn't count as floor area, nobody could ever have imagined building a building like this. And so it may well be that we're not going far enough, that people will imagine other ways to do things that we're still leaving on the table.
Thank you so much for your comment. And as we have stated, we are currently looking into those special districts, and we would have some proposal this year. Yes.
We very much focused on the buildings that were the, the cause of the current controversy for very legitimate reasons. Yes, Commissioner Ties.
Hi, good afternoon. So I'm trying to understand sort of the original purpose of this analysis. And, you know, it stated that this is about limiting heights. The concern was that, you know, there are no explicit height limits on this space, these spaces, and as a result, we've seen excessively tall mechanical floors that results in high buildings. So, so that makes sense to me, that we would limit the height and figure out a way to do that. What I don't quite understand is what the concern around clustering is, and, you know, what the concerns about, you know, the continuous voids in either the lower or middle section? If those are properly sized from a height perspective and we don't end up with an excessively tall building, what's the benefit of requiring those to be split up if, for whatever reason, it makes the building more efficient?
Sure, absolutely. So as I presented, as part of the presentation, we looked into several hundred buildings developed over the last 10-plus years. And 95 or, you know, more buildings conform to like a regular, you know, mechanical spaces. And they typically has not more than like, you know, one mechanical floor in the middle of the development. Most of the mechanical spaces are concentrated in the cellar space or the top of the building. And, you know, that, like, you know, that's not, like, you know, it could be done in the same configuration for the same floor area for lower building. Like, you know, if you have like, you know, thousands, like a hundred thousand square feet of floor space that mechanical have to, you know, serve, 95% of those buildings can't do the service without having that much of floor space concentrated, concentrated in a specific portion of a buildings. And we believe that for a building to function efficiently, the mechanical space need to be distributed evenly so that you don't need to have like, you know, piping that is go through like a 20, 30 stories up in the air. So our finding is that, like, as you saw in our city-sponsored tower configurations, evenly distributing those mechanical spaces to serve equal number of floor space in the building is, seems to be the most efficient mechanical typology.
I might elaborate on that, that, let's say, the requirement were the 25 feet, but not the clustering. If one wanted to raise a building above a neighboring building, instead of one 150-foot mechanical space, one could put six 25-foot mechanical spaces. And again, we don't see it as a building needs, as a building typology, something that is, would be driving that, but rather the desire to, to use the Commissioner's term, Commissioner Levin's term, monetize the air.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I see it as, you know, we're using this a very blunt tool to get at the question of height.
I would actually note that we are not regulating height. That was not what drove us here.
I know, but we're, we're here trying to keep these towers from getting too high. They're excessively tall. That was what we've been told.
I actually believe it's, again, what Commissioner Levin noted, that the zoning resolution, the change, the changes in technology are allowing the zoning resolution's exclusion of mechanical spaces to result in what we believe are excessive and artificially.
Tall buildings.
No, tall mechanical spaces. And it's, again, because of the exclusion.
I understand, but the result of that is a building that we perceive as excessively tall.
No, it is, again, the excessively tall mechanical space as an attempt to get around what is our form of regulation, which is FAR.
Understood. I think we're saying the same thing in different, in two different ways, but, you know, I guess, I guess the question, and this goes back to, you know, the extent to which we, you know, architects or engineers might, you know, inform this discussion to the extent that there might be innovations, there might in fact be reasons that we are not aware of at this moment that would suggest that clustering is a more efficient way to build an extra tall, or a building of a certain scale or size. That's certainly not my area of expertise, but when the time comes, it would be great to hear from someone who can speak to that issue and can address this question of clustering.
Yes. So our proposal is based on our, you know, study that looked into several hundred buildings and as well as talking to building construction engineers. However, at the same time, yes, I note that there is a chance of innovation that may require that kind of building configurations. And I encourage, you know, those communities to come up, to speak to the Commissioner.
A few things. One, we had extensive consultation, but that's what the public review process is for, is to hear voices coming forward. The other thing that we, another one of our core principles here, though, was we value architectural expression and creativity, which is why we didn't place a ban if someone believed that this was either necessary, which we haven't found evidence of, or that they thought that this was a beautiful design, always possible to do it, but just it would become floor area. Yes, Commissioner Deloose.
I'm just wondering, in the analysis that you've done so far, was there anything to suggest that buildings within a floodplain were more or less likely to have mechanical spaces that were larger? I'm just wondering how resilience issues may or may not impact things.
Sure, yes. We, we've been talking to the Department's Flood Resiliency Team to make sure that our regulation wouldn't impede the, you know, future, you know, flood mitigations need for, you know, developments. And our regulation is not about, like, requiring mechanical spaces to be located in a certain area. So in the flood area, like typically, you know, residential buildings has a larger mechanical space in the cellar, but that's typically not desirable in a flood area. So in that case, they could have, you know, mechanical space raised above the, you know, first row, first floor to be above the floodplain. And we believe that the 25 feet allowance we are imposing here would have enough space for those, like a cellar mechanical spaces to be raised above the height of cellar level.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Thank you so much. So I, I'm going to attempt to put sort of a practical spin on this for a minute. So if a building has a 24-foot space, it does not count?
That, that is correct.
Or perhaps 25? Is it 24 or is it at 25?
25 feet, okay, 25 foot, one inch, not okay.
One inch, not okay. Okay, so we'll do the 25, makes it easy. When you did the math and you took the 132-foot space, you divided it by 25, and then you said that came to 5.28, and then you made it 5?
Yes.
And then said it would count as five floors of floor area?
Yes.
So the first 25 you don't get, you lose it all, none of it becomes not countable against the formula?
Well, what I, we believe is that the, we just said, like, 25 feet of, or above, we punish you twice, or like, we require you to count as two-floor area, two, two floors, like, you know, 25 foot, one inches, or like, you know, we believe mechanical space less than 25 feet is very reasonably sized. The moment they exceed the, you know, height by like one inch, counting that as two additional floor area in the building, that's, for me, it sounds like a little going beyond what, you know, we, we want to, you know, like, you know, they, there may be a situation where, you know, because of piping or some other issues, they have to exceed the height threshold by one inch. Then we don't necessarily want to say, you, you, you know, I got you, you, you have to pay two, the penalty twice.
Okay. I'm not sure I, I'm connecting the response to the question, but I, I understand what you're saying. I guess what I'm saying is, when.
Excluding the first 25.
Somewhere in the process, 25 feet of this, on its own, is permissible, right? It's not.
Excessive.
So I guess in the math, what I'm trying to figure out if I understood it correctly, which it seems that I may have, which is if you, when we do the math on the more than 25, because in this case it was 132, maybe it's 100, maybe it's 90, when we divide that number by 25, there is no credit for the first 25. So we are saying that all of that is counting against your floor area, even though if you had just had 25, that would not have counted.
You're right, it's an additional disincentive.
It's an additional disincentive. So if you did 25 and 100 feet later, you did another 25, because here it's, it can't be within 75, you'd get that 25, you'd get the next 25, but.
Yes.
If you just kept it all together, you would lose even the original 25?
Yes.
Okay, at least I understood it, even though I'm not sure that that's the way, but I get it, thank you. The second question I had, and this is also sort of mathematical, I just want to understand the data that helped to define this. And, and I was sketching it, I was writing it down quickly. So I know you said in the R6 to R10, there were over 700 buildings in the study, and you did not find any examples of excessive space usage. And then in the R9 and R10, and correct me if my numbers are wrong here, because I was a little behind you on this, there were 80 new buildings in the study area, and only seven had somehow fallen into the category of problem.
Excessive void, yes.
So I guess the, the question is, and I'm not really debating the, this, the issue on here, is that are seven buildings really, and I'm not saying they're not important to neighborhoods, I'm not, this is not a judgment and on, on that, but when we talk about data, what number wasn't going to be, like, was it one? Was it four? Seven out of 800 buildings that we've looked at created a problem in New York City? And that's what's driving this? And I realize there could be problems in the future, and I realize all the things, I'm just trying to understand what is driving this, when if you really looked at the data in any other area, when you looked at the percentage, you would say, okay, not such a big deal? Not to a community, not, not to a community.
I would argue that these buildings are absolute flashpoints. And when we look at it from a land use perspective, this is monetizing the skyline, monetizing the air with, one, in a way that wasn't anticipated, and two, in a way that is not providing housing for people or space for jobs. And so if anything, we would be faulted for not having done this at the first building. It took a while for us to do this incredible amount of research, but I would hesitate to say it's just seven. The extent of the ardor, this, this was the issue in the mayor's town halls on the Upper East Side and on the Upper West Side. And again, if it were, if, if we didn't believe that this was not what was intended by the zoning resolution, we wouldn't be doing it. But I can't overstate the significance to communities of expectations based on what technology allowed at the time.
Yes, and I, and I understand that, and I can't at all disagree with the, the explanation, and I'm not challenging it. I just wanted to better understand, because there are lots of issues, and, and again, I realize the significance in a community, so I'm not minimizing that by asking the question. I don't want to be afraid to ask the question because of the potential interpretation. I'm not challenging that. I just wanted to understand how we are, what's driving this, not just one project, not just two projects, but a serious problem. And I realize you can't take it back once it happens, and I realize that there's been a manipulation perhaps of what is permissible in a development that we are correcting in that, and I'm not disagreeing with it. But I did want to understand, because data is important, and when you look at the data in terms of development that goes on and approvals that we create and what's happening, one might argue that seven versus everything we've looked at, again, acknowledging that someone is looking at this and living with the implications, that maybe there are other things that we should be looking at. I also like to know, because there are issues around our city that impact not many or many developments that should have their time, but sometimes don't get the time because it doesn't have a huge impact, not physically and visually, but perhaps. it doesn't have a huge impact, not physically and visually, but perhaps in a community or in a particular development. So I like knowing that, because there could be things that come up in the future that we should be looking at, too, that perhaps the data doesn't necessarily support a huge issue, but there is still an issue to be had. So I thank you for that, and I thank you.
And also, to your point, that is why we did not just immediately say, oh, aha, high-density residential districts, same rules should apply in central business districts because of different considerations that require the same type of fact-based analysis that we engaged in in developing this proposal. Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you. Commissioner Cirillo raised a point that I think gets, gets back to sort of the clustering, you know, we had, you had mentioned, and I think it's true, what we're basically saying is don't build your mechanical spaces over 25 feet, you know, and, and any developer who looks at that will build, you know, exactly that and nothing more, because the penalty for going a few inches over is so extreme. And, and that's fine, because it keeps us from, as you said, monetizing the sky, but I still get back to this, you know, if, if for whatever reason there is a technology that suggests that two 25-foot floors enables a degree of efficiency in a building, and they should be clustered, why should we penalize a developer for doing that if the outcome is, is a building that is no taller than it would have been otherwise? So I just question the, the, you know, the purpose of the preventative clustering piece of this proposal.
Sure, yes. We looked into like how we address those, like, you know, clustering, and, you know, vast majority of the buildings we surveyed has around 12-foot mechanical space. That's, I would say, like 80-plus percent of residential towers had 12-foot or so residential mechanical space in the middle of the building. 25 feet allows two stories of the mechanic space. So we are confident that 12 feet already can accommodate the vast majority of the essential development.
Why isn't 12 feet? And over 12 feet, we have?
Well, I said 80%, and we don't want to preclude other 20% to be providing, like, you know, like if you have like a double-floor area, like, you know, if you have a small building footprint, you may not be able to fit all the required mechanical space on one floor. They may just have to go extend to the second floor to have a, like, you know, like a water tank or something that didn't fit on the first floor, and.
We were trying to strike the balance between, one, accommodating what is happening in practice with the recognition that technologies can change. I think that it was likely that we're going to hear that 25 feet is too high, too low, just right, but certainly what was driving it was looking at what would accommodate all but these seven buildings, in which it seems very hard to argue, looking at the number of units that are in the building, that there were excessive mechanical needs beyond the 12 feet that generally is provided.
Commissioner Edie.
I'm assuming in our review and our analysis of this, that in looking at those seven buildings in particular, there was no indication that that additional height was required to accommodate space for the mechanical space, that it is really space that is left as a void, I guess, is what we found.
We've been in touch with construction professionals, and if you have like a 10 engineers, 10, like, each of them may have different opinions how those space is necessary or to be filled by mechanical space. So it's, it's really difficult to, you know, say, but like what we can tell in confident is that most, vast majority of buildings could do a lot of things within 25 feet. The moment you want to do the excessive mechanical space, they're not going to be like a 26 feet, but 80 feet, 100 feet, 150 feet. So there seems to be a very clear line where, you know, if you are like a reason, like, you know, typical versus not typical, the moment you're typical, your floor, mechanical floor height tend to be 12 to 25 feet, the moment you're in a not-so-typical category, you're already doing 80, 100, 150 feet. So I believe that our proposal would, would be able to address this proposal very efficiently, a problem very efficiently, without precluding, you know, necessary mechanical spaces.
Is there a possibility to pre- include either like a chair certification or something where as, if a developer had a real need and was able to demonstrate that need and to do your satisfaction, is there an opportunity to provide that?
The proposal as drafted today does not have any special, like a waiver provision. We frame this proposal as an incentive, like a disincentive for developer to utilize it, but if they indeed have to utilize that larger mechanical space, they will have to use their floor area toward the additional mechanical space they need.
And so one could imagine that if a developer, for whatever reason, felt that needed 40 feet, that disincentive would be relatively small, would not be the 5 FAR of the 132-foot example. So I think the fact that it is still allowed, but at a floor area price, is what we thought was the self-correcting mechanism.
Okay.
Commissioner Marine.
Do we know, the seven, the seven or eight buildings that were identified, do we know their heights, and do we know more information about those buildings? Because it does, look, it does make sense that if, for efficiency purposes, the way mechanical equipment works is, is it, the bigger the equipment, the bigger the size of your pipes, bigger size of your flues, so you're taking out space from a building anyway when you're doing that, and you're causing less, you're getting less floor area per floor. Smaller, smaller, the smaller the height of the mechanical space is more efficient, the mechanical equipment runs more efficiently, your pipes, your vents are smaller. It also, that's an advantage to the developer. So whether you're, and let's say, for instance, you have a building that's 120, 25 stories, right? You're talking about splitting that mechanical space above, around the 25, 125 stories, call it every 20 stories as you're proposing, you're still getting your five mechanical spaces as needed per cluster, and you're not being penalized. So, I mean, the idea of lumping them, would, understanding the height of the existing buildings would better inform us as to this lumping that we're talking about, because if the building is taller, and you're going to have five mechanical spaces that equal 125 feet, but are spread above the, throughout the building, and you're not going to get penalized for it, and your systems are going to work even better, makes more sense, whereas if one cluster of mechanical equipment goes bad, you're losing 20, you know, 20 stories of residential that may be affected versus having one huge mechanical that affects the entire building. So in terms of common sense, it all makes sense.
Great.
Commissioner Dweck.
Not that I have much to add, and certainly I'm not the expert on the topic, but I would, I would support Commissioner Edie's idea of a chairperson certification for a waiver in case of mitigating circumstances. We're not aware of what future technologies could be out there, what needs could be for any reason, but certainly I would trust the chairperson now and future, too.
Thank you so much. We will look into the potential of having such provision.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Just one last question, just for clarification, the measurement of the 25 feet is from finished floor to finished floor?
Structural floor to structural ceiling.
Structural ceiling, okay. Thank you.
Yes, because people can easily speculate, there could be a drop ceiling that has like, you know, 100 feet space above it, which is not going to be.
That's why I asked the question, because, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
Okay.
What we, what we will do is refer this out to all affected community boards and the borough boards and the borough presidents for 30 days.
The third item on our agenda, page 76, is a referral of a zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 2. Our presenter is Alexis Wheeler.
Good afternoon, commissioners. And before you today with a proposed text amendment to section 4312 to the zoning resolution that permits expansion of existing manufacturing buildings for manufacturing use. There is a series of qualifying criteria in the text itself, and so this is a proposal to expand the eligible year to utilize an expansion factor of 150%, or essentially giving them the opportunity to develop from 2 FAR to now 3 FAR on site. Indeed. So if you can bring yourself down to the ground plane, this is a context in Long Island City, and it's just to the east of the Sunnyside Yard, and it's a, it fronts on the Dutch Kales Canal, which comes off of Newtown Creek, and that's really, it's an, it's all an IBZ area, and it's north of the Long Island Expressway. And here you'll see the bounding streets are 27th Street and 49th Avenue, and again, it fronts on Dutch Kales Canal. Just across 27th Street, there is some light manufacturing, but we're also seeing a trend of some of the existing loft buildings there converting to office in this district. And the existing zoning in this area is M32, which wraps around the head of the canal and continues down to the west along Newtown Creek, which is really a core industrial area, but just across 27th, it does change to an M14 zoning district, and M14 is really the majority of this IBZ zoning. And it is primarily industrial around here, but again, as I mentioned, largely around Ostell Place, which is just to the north of the site. That's where we're seeing a lot more of this conversion gradually occurring. But also in this M32 district, we have a concrete plant, we have a green asphalt plant, so there is still some heavy productive uses in this district. And the existing site photos for this area, looking south towards the site, along 27th, you'll see a couple of the existing loft buildings that I had previously mentioned, and here is the subject site on the left. And then there's also a view looking to the north of one of the main corners where the enlargement would in fact occur, and that's on the corner of 27th and 47th, 27th and 47th here. And this is just looking up towards the main frontage of the building that falls on 47th, and you'll see it's also just up against the bridge that crosses the canal. And the building itself, again, fronts on the canal, and then just beyond, you can see the ever-growing skyline of Long Island City. And so this text would allow for this existing facility to be able to expand from its existing permitted 2 FAR under the M32 to 3 FAR through the expansion of the eligible year and criteria. And so you'll see that the majority of that expansion would be occurring at the corner with a small piece extending over the existing building. So Manah Cosmetics is one of the three largest cosmetics manufacturers in the entire country, the other two being in New Jersey and Florida, so it's certainly not a typical urban use of this scale, but they've been located in the neighborhood since the 70s, and currently they are split between two different facilities, and so the facility that is currently being discussed, as well as a facility that fronts on Queens Boulevard. The Queens Boulevard facility, they currently utilize the top floors of that existing loft building, but while being split between two facilities, they are currently incurring that sort of last mile cost twice. And so if there's ever a mistake with a batch, they have to truck it back and forth, and so it does really result in an inefficiency of space. A disproportionate amount of the space then goes to just warehousing for everything that's occurring mid-process, and it also requires more staff for the actual shipment process. And so they are instead interested in being able to consolidate all of their operations into this one facility, where they would then be able to not just bring everyone into one house, but also be able to modernize their facility, and so they want to go through the process of bringing up all of their lines, and so that will instead also allow them to operate more efficiently, including a full third shift. And so this is showing just where the extent of the proposed enlargement is. It still works with the sky exposure plane requirements under zoning, but essentially they will build out the corner here and extend up and just over the existing building. And so to see what some of that programmatic, the programmatic elements would be, currently at the corner, that's where there, some parking and any of their sort of shipping is occurring. So now the trucks will be inside the building, and this is all the area that they are wanting to sort of modernize and change the composition of the space in terms of where chemicals are being located and where they're doing, where they are running the lines for packaging. And this just shows sectionally how they want to be integrating this new enlargement into the rest of the building. And so not only does that include some additional amenities for the workers, but it also will allow for a more robust research and development department. This is a company that actually does all of their own research and development in-house, so everything down to the design of a makeup case is something that they have intellectual property for, and they're responsible for that, not just the mixing of the cosmetics batches themselves. And just to see how you would access the site from the street, so the vehicular access and loading would all occur off of, sorry, this is mislabeled, but it's 27th Street here, and then the main entry for the building is still going to remain on 27th, or sorry, 49th here. And so just to review what the actual proposed text is going to be, as I mentioned previously, there are a series of kind of qualifiers to even be eligible for this scale of enlargement. As it stands, as of right, you could do 110% if you are eligible just as of right here by being in a manufacturing use in a manufacturing building, if you are existing prior to 1961, then that is how the 150% becomes something that's available to the project. And so we would simply like to be able to extend that date to 1965, thus allowing them to enlarge their facility. And that's everything.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
Juan, it just seems like you've had fun with this, just learning about Manah in this process.
I assume everyone wants a site tour, right?
I guess the question I have, so would this change in text apply to any other property in the area?
It would not, and we were actually pretty mindful of that when we were working on the, the text. So both to help control and contain the scope for this, but also, this is a section that has been identified by the agency as wanting to broaden its applicability, but we didn't necessarily want one applicant to carry the water for the entire city. But when there are buildings with existing manufacturing uses and they want the ability to expand, especially if it's going to be delivering good jobs to the area, then we certainly want to find a way to do that. In this case, we really hemmed it into the specific zoning district and falling within Appendix J and being a certain lot size to help make sure that, again, they're hemmed into this, but we do see this as sort of an early version of what sort of text amendment we would want to see this go.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
I'm just struck by the fact that they, you know, they'll be keeping 106 parking spaces, and they haven't asked for more parking, which is, you know, a good, a good thing. I think, you know, some, to some degree, I assume that their employees must take other means of transportation to this location. Do you know anything about that?
Yes, so the majority of their employees do commute via transit, and this is a site that is accessible to the 7 train, just at the Hunter's Point Station, so they get both express and local service, but that's really the majority of the workers there. And then they do have some existing parking on site, and so with the expansion, they're going to be leasing from a neighboring property parking lot, so that way they won't have a net loss of parking, but they've been seeing gradual decreases in their utilization rates.
That's great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we will then refer this to the, excuse me, to the community board and the borough president for 45 days.
Okay, thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda, page 84, is a certification of a UDAP designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District 4. 4. Our presenter is Annie White.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Ryan just outlined, this is an application for a UDAP designation disposition and project approval for a property located at 201, 207, 7th Avenue in Manhattan, Community District 4. The applicant for this project is the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD. The project site is located in the Chelsea neighborhood of Community District 4. HPD is seeking this Urban Development Action Area Project, or UDAP designation disposition and project approval, to facilitate the development of a new nine-story mixed-use commercial and residential development. The project site, which has a red outline here, a bit hard to see, includes four contiguous tax lots and is located on the corner of West 22nd Street and 7th Avenue. It's just one block south of the West 23rd Street 1 train station. The Chelsea neighborhood is primarily residential with a mix of ground-floor retail, some nitrogen developments, and townhouse-style residences. Many of the residential structures along 7th Avenue rise to a height of five to six stories, but many buildings in the surrounding area rise up to 15 stories. The project site is within R8A residential district with a C25 commercial overlay. Contextual quality housing bulk regulations are mandatory in R8A districts. The FAR is 6.02, and the maximum building height is 120 feet. The C25 commercial overlay are usually mapped in residential districts along streets that serve local retail needs and allow up to 2 FAR of commercial on the site. So for some further background on this project site and the buildings themselves, in 1976, the city assumed ownership of 201, 203, 205, and 207, 7th Avenue through a tax lien foreclosure. In 1997, the 14 dwelling units that were throughout the four buildings were entered into the HPD Tenant Interim Lease, or TIL, program. Starting in 2008, tenants began to be relocated from the property due to structural issues. Eventually, nine of the 14 units were vacant. At the time of this application, tenants in four of those five remaining units have been relocated, and HPD is actively working to relocate that remaining tenant. Then, post-construction, all relocated tenants will have the opportunity to return to the new units. The 1999 rezoning rezoned this project site from a C62M commercial district to the R8A residential district with the C25 commercial overlay. And the purpose of that rezoning was to preserve the neighborhood character while allowing new developments to reinforce the existing building form and mixed-use nature. This is an early rendering of the proposed development. I do want to say that all the graphics are just drafts. The architect and the applicant are actively working with the Community Board in refining the design of the building. It will be an approximately 22,000-square-foot, nine-story mixed-use commercial and residential building. There will be 26 affordable homeownership units, which will be a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. Other common amenities will include storage, a recreation room, a laundry room, an elevator, and approximately 1,000-square-foot rooftop space for the residential tenants. The building will be 85 feet in height, and the street wall will rise to 67 feet with a setback on the eighth floor along the West 22nd Street and 7th Avenue corner. That's what you're seeing here in this rendering, and that setback will provide for that rooftop terrace. The development will also include approximately 4,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground level and in the cellar. The image here is that ground floor plan with proposed commercial tanning space. The residential entrance will be separate on West 22nd Street. HPD is seeking the Urban Development Action Area Project designation, project approval and disposition to facilitate the proposed development pursuant to Article 16 of the General Municipal Law. The development site as is consists of an underutilized property, which impairs the quality of the surrounding community. According to the applicant, the proposed development would protect and promote health and safety and would promote sound growth and development in the project area. The project site is therefore eligible to be an urban development action area, and the proposed development is therefore eligible to be an urban development action area project. The project site is proposed for disposition to a developer that has been selected by HPD through the RFP, or Request for Qualifications, which was issued in 2015. From that list of qualified developers, HPD has designated Asians Americans for Equality as the developer for the 7th Avenue site. Thank you.
Okay, then this application is certified.
Okay, the fifth item on the agenda, page 97, is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan, Community District 4.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by 18th Highline Associates LLC, which seeks a special permit to build a 180-space-attended accessory parking garage at 515 West 18th Street as part of Naz of Right Mixed Use Development in the West Chelsea neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District 4. The proposed action would allow for 139 parking spaces in addition to the as-of-right 36 residential parking spaces and five commercial parking spaces in a building with 181 residential dwelling units and 18,000 square feet of commercial use. The development site is located between 10th and 11th Avenues and West 18th and 19th Streets and will consist of two residential buildings built on either side of the high line. The building to the west will contain 126 units, and the building to the east will contain 55 units. The lobby connecting the two buildings will be located underneath the high line. The garage entrance would be located in the building to the west of the high line along West 18th Street. Previously on the development site, there was an open public parking lot with 250 spaces on the eastern side of the high line and a two-story former factory building that was demolished in the fall of 2017 on the western side. On this map, the development site is outlined in red, and the project area, which encompasses most of the block, is outlined in a dotted line. The proposed special permit would apply to the entire project area. The project area is located partially in a C62 district on the eastern end of the block and partially in a C63 district on the western end. The project area is also located in the Special West Chelsea District and subareas D, E, and G, which contains regulations to facilitate the restoration and reuse of the high line. The area has seen growth and development in recent years, largely due to the West Chelsea rezoning in 2005 and the creation of the High Line Transfer Corridor. This is the entrance, there is an entrance to the high line on the south side of West 18th Street directly across from the proposed building. The project area includes the 10-story Frank Gehry-designed IAC building at the western end of the block, as well as the kitchen, a four-story performance space on the north side of the block. Immediately to the south of the project area is the development site for a planned mixed-use development at 76 11th Avenue. The Chelsea Piers complex is located across 11th Avenue, for which there is a crossing at 18th Street. Hudson River Greenway runs along 11th Avenue alongside Chelsea Piers. The nearest subway is the ACE and L on 8th Avenue, and the M12 and M14D buses run eastbound on 18th Street. And the M11 runs northbound on 10th Avenue. These photos show the development site as it currently is, under construction. In the photo on the left, you can see the kitchen, which is the reddish-brown building behind the high line. In the photo on the right, you can also see part of the IAC building to the west of the development site. These photos show a view of the development site from West 19th Street. Previously on the development site, there was a public parking lot on the eastern side of the high line and a two-story former factory building that was demolished in the fall of 2017 on the western side. This is the ground floor plan of the building, which includes the garage entrance on one-way eastbound West 18th Street. West 18th Street is 60 feet wide with two curbside parking lanes. The garage entrance would be approximately 180 feet from 11th Avenue. The development site contains five existing curb cuts along the north side of West 18th Street, serving four formerly active driveways prior to their recent closure for demolition and the development of the project. There are also two additional curb cuts on 10th Avenue and two on West 19th Street. These will all be removed, and there will only be one single curb cut for the garage. So entering cars would proceed via the 22-foot-wide curb cut to the ramp leading to the garage in the cellar. Cars would head down the ramp, pass the 10 reservoir spaces, and stop at the bottom, where an attendant would be waiting. There would be 44 stackers located in the cellar. Drivers would then proceed to the stairway or elevator to the street. This elevation shows a view of the building facing north from West 18th Street. The high line runs between the two proposed structures, with the building entrance proposed beneath the high line. The garage entrance would be located on the ground floor of the western building on the lower left of this drawing. It's outlined in red. In addition to the conditions and findings that are included in your briefing packages, the special permit for additional parking spaces requires a residential growth parking study. The applicant completed the study and found during the 10-year study period, there was a net increase of 172 parking spaces, including the project, and an increase of 2,282 dwelling units. The proposed project has a residential growth parking ratio of 8%. In Community District 4, the maximum permitted percentage of parking spaces to dwelling units is 20%. I'm happy to take any questions.
Before taking questions, I want to note that this application is complete, and so we are certifying it. But I do want to express the fact that the department has significant reservations about this application. The parking study, clearly the requirements were met, but there are also other qualitative provisions. And if we look at the relevant section of the zoning resolution, it notes that these regulations reflect best practices to address sustainability goals as one part of the mandate. We'll note that most new developments in Manhattan don't have any parking, and this is true especially of the Manhattan Core. There's also nothing unique to this development that suggests that it needs extra parking above what is permitted as of right. We looked at the vehicle ownership rate in the Manhattan Core, and the most recent data we have is from 2015. And at that point, the vehicle ownership rate in the Core was 23%. And in New York City overall, it was 46%. That's nowhere near the 100% that is being requested here, or just shy of 100%, 180 spaces for 181 units. Even if we look at households earning $130,000 or more in the Manhattan Core, the vehicle ownership rate was approximately 34%. So we don't see the request for one-to-one parking as addressing the city's and the department's sustainability goals. Turning to the more specific findings, the Commission is required to find that the location of the vehicular entrances and exits won't unduly interrupt the flow of pedestrian traffic or result in any undue conflict between pedestrian and vehicular movements. On this particular site, we believe that there will be impacts. As was noted, a featured entrance to the high line is directly across 18th Street from the property. And the area is seeing ever more pedestrians, more residents, more tourists, more recreational activity. In addition to the adjacency to a major entry to the high line, along 18th Street, just west of the project site, is a crosswalk that connects to Chelsea Piers and to the Hudson River Greenway. And this area is a high-impact destination for the high line, used by residents, tourists, international tourists, but also the waterfront. And increasingly, it's become a destination for people who want to look at cutting-edge architecture and design. That's the nature of the district. A second finding that the Commission would be required to make is that the location of the vehicular entrances, exits, won't interfere with the efficient functioning of the streets. Again, on this particular street, we think that that finding can't be met. There's a designated striped bike path along 18th Street. The Hudson River Greenway has thousands of daily users. The most recent information we have is in July of 2017, in a 12-hour period, over 7,600 users. And finally, there are two bus lines, east-west bus lines, that run along 18th Street. The final finding that the Commission is required to make is that the facility won't be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape. If we were to go back a number of years, the streetscape was dominated by surface commuter parking lots and also parking and stacked risers. But today, the streetscape in the immediately surrounding area is predominantly newly-constructed residential buildings, residential buildings that are under construction, commercial office space, open spaces such as the high line, and a few remaining residual auto-related uses. We believe that the streetscape has changed over the years and is now very much a streetscape of residential developments, recreational uses, not car-dependent tenants in car-oriented buildings. And so for those reasons, while the department is bringing this forward for certification, we are not supporters of this special permit. And with that, I'll toss it open. Commissioner Levin.
Well, that's a refreshing series of remarks, as someone who, I think, came down here to testify in, what, 2000 and whatnot, when the residential growth special permit was created. And we all knew, at Community Board 4, that in this neighborhood, it made no sense, because this was Mid-Manhattan's parking lot. So the whole calculations about residential growth are simply out of whack. There's no notion that you need to be replacing the existing, the parking that did exist there. But, you know, more to the core of your remarks, it's refreshing to see the department focusing on the qualitative findings that are required and not just the numerical calculation. Certainly be interesting to hear this come back for public hearing. I wonder, when it does, if we could get an image of what the streetscape on the south side of 18th Street is going to look like? Because that site is under construction, so we must know what it will be, where the plaza entrance will be, where the high line entrance will be. Is there parking intended? Are they planning parking in the new building across the street?
I don't know that.
Okay, if we could find that out, and maybe they're coming at us with a permit for a garage, it would be good to know that.
I should note, the entrance already exists right now. The entrance to the high line on 18th Street currently exists.
Right, right. But if we could get one of those little drawings that shows the whole, you know, the whole streetscape, both on the south side and the north side, so we can match them up and see what's, how they play with each other, that would, I think, help us look at this. Oh, and the other thing is, we've had a series of these applications, some of which have gone for, I guess it would be good to know where the other one-to-one parking ratio buildings are that we have approved in recent memory. And I know also, we've had some luxury development proposals in this area that came to us for other reasons, that were not including any parking at all, that the developers came and testified to us that they didn't see a need for parking in buildings like that. I'd like to be reminded of where those buildings are too, if that's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ties.
I have to second Commissioner Levin's comments, and thank you, Chair Lago, for the statement on behalf of DCP. I said, you know, we have had a number of these one-to-one parking ratios, and I certainly have expressed concern along the lines of, you know, a number of the points that you made. But we've been unsuccessful in those previous instances of raising those points. So I think this is very much appreciated. I know that, you know, two things that have come up in those previous approvals, you know, was the size of the units. We were told that the units were much larger, and so that, you know, that in all effect, it wasn't really a one-to-one ratio. If we think, if we realize that the units are twice the size of a regular unit, we've also been told that, you know, there'll be stackers. And so, you know, adding these additional spaces doesn't necessarily, you know, impact the amount of parking square footage in the building. You know, we've been told, and I imagine here that they've got, they're going to make the argument, although I love that, you know, this is a different kind of streetscape than it was. So, but still, we're going from five curb cuts to one. So, but still, we're going from five curb cuts to one. And so, you know, I would love to continue to make the argument that this is substantially different district because of the high line and because of all of the pedestrian traffic, and we have to recognize that. And that's something that, you know, I would like to be able to share and continue to communicate in other proposals that come before us for similar requests. So, thank you.
Commissioner Idy.
In addition to the other report, projects you researched for us that we have approved in the past, if you can also include the size of those projects, because I think this is larger than the others we've looked at.
Number of, number of units, or?
Number of units, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
I'm sorry, one other question. What's the plan for disposition of these spaces? Are they going to be sold along, I mean, I understand this building is a condo, is that right?
Yeah.
Are the spaces going to be sold along with the condo units? Are they going to be controlled, or is this going to be one of these accessory garages that operates like a public garage?
Yeah, they're, they're not going to be sold along, there's not going to be a package with the condo units. They're going to be, they're going to be sold.
Okay. Well, because there, the statement of findings does say that it's not intended to accommodate transient users. So I hope when they come for the public hearing, they can explain to us why that is. What kind of, because, you know, it is, it honestly is one thing if the spaces are attributable to individual condo units, and there really is a control on the amount of transient use. But if this is a transient garage, it raises a whole host of other, emphasizes the importance of the issues that the chair identified.
Other questions? Commissioner Romperchuk.
I have a question. Looking at this report at page 120, it states here, once again, is the parking facility is not going to be used as a public garage, but it says, "on a regular basis and scheduled primarily by the tenants of the development or nearby residents who have licenses for available spaces." Can you clarify what that means, licenses for?
I'm not sure what that means, exactly.
I don't know.
But I think it's probably related to.
It is public.
So.
Comments?
Thank you.
Okay, this application is certified.
Okay, the sixth item on the agenda, page 143, is a referral of a minor modification of a previously-approved special permit in Manhattan, Community District 10. Our presenter is Edwin Marshall.
The applicant seeks the approval of a minor modification to the Ennis Francis large-scale residential development plan to facilitate the development of 332 units of mixed-income housing. The project site is located within Central Harlem in Manhattan, Community District 10. The applicant is a private applicant, Carthage Advisors LLC, and the development site is located within the Ennis Francis LSRD. The LSRD comprises three tax lots on Block 1929. The lots are 17, 29, and 57. The development site is located at 206 to 254 West 124th Street and comprises Block 1929, Lot 17. The LSRD was approved by the commission in 1983. It comprises three buildings that total 232 units. In 2010, the commission approved the first modification to the LSRD to facilitate the development of a 60-unit mixed-income building that rises to a height of eight stories. The requested action before the commission would enable the LSRD to be modified in order for the applicant to develop the 322 units of mixed-income housing. In sum, the requested action would reduce the LSRD area by removing Lot 17, which is Zone R7A. The LSRD does not allow contextual zoning districts within it, so this is basically a corrective action by removing Lot 17, leaving lots 29 and 57 in the LSRD, which is coterminous with the underlying R8 district. It would also allow for the development of two new as-of-right buildings in accordance with the R8 district regulations, and would increase the residential floor area, increase the number of dwelling units from 292 to 482, and also provide 7,100 square feet of community facility space and 60 accessory parking spaces. So this image shows the Ennis Francis LSRD. It's outlined in the red. It comprises three tax lots, Lots 57, which comprises the development site, Lot 29, which is an 11-story building fronts on Adam Powell Boulevard, and Lot 17. And the LSRD is generally bounded by 123rd Street to the south, 124th Street to the north, and Adam Powell Boulevard to the east. Taking a step back, just to give you a better regional context within which Ennis Francis is located, Ennis Francis is located here, and here, and here. The western portion of the block is anchored by the Alot Hotel, which comprises 12 stories. And right over here is the Teresa, through the top of the tement. Tement is about 160 feet or so, 116 stories, and we can see what's happening on the north side of West 124th Street. Actually, let me go back. The buildings located on West 124th Street basically are the backs of buildings which front on 125th Street. These are through lots, and these buildings are primarily commercial buildings. This image shows sort of a drill down on what's happening on 124th Street. This is the development site, and it comprises 493 feet of frontage along West 124th Street, and we're looking west towards the Alot Hotel. This is another image that shows West 124th Street. This is the development site, and these are the backs of buildings, commercial buildings, which front on 125th Street. This image shows, provides a better perspective of what's happening on 123rd Street. We just talked about 124th Street. This is 124th Street here. This is 123rd Street, Adam Powell Boulevard, Frederick Douglass Boulevard, and these buildings are basically four, five, and some six-story residential buildings. There aren't any commercial uses in these buildings on 123rd Street. And these images show basically what you see, again, four, five, and six-story buildings along 123rd Street. This is the eight-story building, part of Ennis Francis, and these are some low-rise buildings on 123rd Street as well. So this is an area map that shows the zoning. This is the LSRD located right here. It is located within an R8 district. The development site is Zone R8, which is a height factor district, which allows buildings between 18 to 20 stories, sometimes can rise higher. The Adam Powell frontage of the block is zoned with a C24 commercial overlay within an R8 district, which allows local retail and local service uses. And Lot 17 is Zone R7A, which is part of a larger R7A district, which was mapped in 2003 as part of Frederick Douglass Boulevard rezoning. As the commission is aware, R7A districts allow contextual buildings up to 80 feet in height within a contextual building envelope with a maximum FAR of four. So this is the proposed build program shown in picture. Lot 57, which comprises the development site, would be demolished and redeveloped. This has 72 units. This was vacated in 2015, so this, this, these buildings have been vacant since 2015. This is Lot 29, an 11-story building with 160 units. This will remain, and this is Lot 17, which will be removed from the site plan. This image shows two versions of the site plan of the existing Ennis Francis development. This is the buildings that will be demolished and redeveloped. This is the 11-story building, and this is Lot 17. It'll be removed, and this shows what happens when Lot 17 is taken from the LSRD. This is the proposed build program, comprises two buildings, Building A and Building B. Building A will have 173 units, low-income units having no more than 80% of AMI, so this is a low-income building. And Building B is a building that'll have 149 units. 30% of that, or 30 units, will be targeted to families making no more than 130% of AMI. So this is a mixed-income building. 119 units will be market rate. Going to the next slide, this is a drill down of the site plan. This is Building A. This is Building B. Building A will also have 71 square feet of community facility space as well. The tenants for that space will be the LBGTQ Center of Harlem and Urban Pathways, which provides services to the homeless in Upper Manhattan. And this is Building B. Again, this is 173 units, and this is, this is 149 units, rather, and this is 173 units. And this is the open space that will serve both buildings. It is fenced from the street, and there's a connection in the basement to both buildings. Parking is provided below in the cellar in Building A, and is accessed through a curb cut located right here. And these are some drawings that show, this is the building and section. This is the existing 11-story building. This is Building A, which will have 17 stories, and this is Building B, which will have 18 stories. These are elevations. Again, this is the 11-story building. This is the 7 stories building, 17-story building. This is the 18-story building, and we're looking, we're on 124th Street, looking south across the street. And this is the back of the buildings, we're on 123rd Street, looking north. This is the 17-story building, Building A, and this is Building B, the 18-story building. And these are some renderings showing the Building A, 17 stories, Building B, 18 stories, and Adam Powell Boulevard is off this drawing here. So in sum, the requested actions would enable the applicant to develop 323 units of mixed-income housing by modifying the Ennis Francis LSRD. I'll take your questions and comments.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
How are you?
I am well.
Do we, do we happen to have the, the unit mix for the two new buildings yet? Has that been developed?
The, the unit mix, in terms of number of bedrooms, I do not have that in front of me, but it's basically two, one, two, and three bedroom units.
Okay, so no studios?
No, none that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. And when it comes back, it'd be helpful to know exactly which financing programs and the length of affordability, since in this case, we're, we're not talking about MIAH.
No, we're not. I can tell you about the financing. The applicant is seeking financing from HPD through the Ella program, as well as 421A.
Okay. And if I might, so what's the impact, if any, of removing Lot 17 from the LSRD?
Well, two things. One is that Lot 17 is zoned R7A. So you really, you cannot have a contextual zoning district in an LSRD. So this is basically cleanup action. By taking it out, it doesn't change the bill program or anything, it's just sort of like something that we just need to do. So there's no substantive change, really, just a cleanup.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. Love talking about this area with you. Edwin, we have a long history of this. So I'm, I'm a little curious about context. I know on these streets, you know, on the back of 125th Street, so on 126 and on 124th, you know, we have a sort of long history of these being residential. You know, even though they are facing the back of commercial buildings, and in fact, the buildings that are there right now are residential buildings. So, you know, residential on the ground floor. So I'm just wondering, you know, what, what is the rationale for the 14, over 14,000 square feet of community facility that, that, you know, as we see in the renderings, will, you know, occur over the length of that entire street? I mean, do we have, do we know whether there's sufficient demand? I mean, is there a reason why we're doing that as opposed to 14 additional units of housing in that location? And why that decision was made?
I can tell you that just overall, just based on my broad experience, there is a demand, an ongoing demand for the services provided by these intended end-users for the community facility space. There's an ongoing need for homeless housing advocacy, as well as providing direct services, as well as the need to serve the LBGTQ community in Upper Manhattan. And the new community facility space, the 7,100, would serve, you know, organizations that provide those types of services. In terms to the existing build context, you know, you're absolutely right, you know, you do have a mix of uses along 124th Street, but this section of 124th, you don't have any residential on the north side of the street. It's all the back of, we're talking about this right here. Okay, all of this is commercial. And these buildings front on, I mean, this is where the old Blumsteens is, right here, for example. You know, so all of this is basically commercial. You really don't get residential until you get to maybe the next block over the wire.
Although the, the Ennis Francis houses were residential.
They were, yeah.
There. So, I mean, we're replacing, that's the context in some case, you know, we're looking at a space in a block that, for quite a long time, has had residential on the ground floor. And I guess I'm just, I'm just pushing on this because, you know, we, we are trying to increase unit count. And, you know, to the extent that we can do that through some, some rethinking of these locations, you know, I understand clearly the need for community facility, 14,000 square feet is a lot of space. And I'm just curious whether there has been any exploration of a design that would enable us to carve out more units. And, and I, you know, when it comes back, it would be great to know a little bit more about that, because I'm, I'm a little hesitant to, you know, get, get behind the, sort of the entire block and, you know, 14,000 square feet of office or, you know, community facility space, which essentially will function as a kind of office space. You know, I think we need to have more of a discussion around the decision that was made.
Okay, the applicant is here, and we'll have additional information for you.
Thank you.
When it comes back, absolutely.
Commissioner Levin.
This is a minor modification, which is a hot phrase around here these days, but seems to be a very different scale in this particular application. Will we be holding a public hearing on this one?
Yes, we will. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No.
It is not, there's not any IAS.
Okay, so when it comes back means it comes back with a community board recommendation, and then we have a follow-up discussion?
Yes.
And then we?
Yes.
Send a letter to DLB?
Right.
If we're, if we're inclined to approve it.
And I'll note that we're going to recommend a 60-day referral because it is a sizable development project.
Okay, okay. So I have a planning question, which I realize goes beyond what this application is for, and that's about the choice of locating the open space or the planning thought that went into the open space that is going to be at grade on 124th with a fence separating it from the sidewalk, across the street from, as you point out, the back of house for commercial uses on 125th. I'd like to understand a little more about qualitatively how that open space will function and how it relates to the rest of the community. I guess, given its requirements under the zoning, I can anticipate the answer, but having a large chunk of open space at that location, I can imagine would be helpful to others, residents other than those who live here, certainly the people whose buildings back up to it from 123rd Street. Help us understand how the open space would work, please.
Now, I can tell you, in terms of what's happening on the block, this block has a very interesting water table condition, you know, and it's true with most of Harlem. The water table is fairly close to the surface, so.
So we've got wading pool going on?
Well, no, but.
Fishing hole?
But as you get, as you get further to the mid-block, it becomes more expensive to put in a sizable building with a foundation. So that might be one of the reasons that informed the decision and the placement of the open space, but as I said, the applicant is here, and we can have more, you know, detailed answers for you in that regard.
And just like to understand what thoughts going on to having it relate well to the streetscape.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? If the applicant, when it comes back, could explain why, I know it's just a one-story difference, but why the taller building is further into the mid-block, would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, so as I noted, we will refer this to the community board for 60 days, after which it will come back for review session discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, the seventh item on the agenda, page 231, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning text amendment and special permits in Brooklyn, Community District 1. Coranza Wood is here to present.
This is 103 North 13th Street, back for pre-hearing. The applicant is proposing a text amendment to expand an existing industrial business incentive area. incentive area and two CPC special permits to facilitate the development of a seven-story, approximately 60,000 square foot, mixed-office industrial and retail development located at 103 North 13th Street in Williamsburg, Brooklyn, Community District 1. The proposed project area is located within the Greenpoint-Williamsburg industrial business zone, shown in the black outline here. It is located to the east of the current and future Bushwick Inlet Park and West of McCarran Park, with access to the G train at Nassau Avenue, the L train at Bedford Avenue, and two ferry stops at India Street and North 7th Street. The surrounding area is located between Greenpoint and Williamsburg. The area is largely mapped with M zoning districts and consists of a mix of low-scale buildings with light manufacturing and industrial uses, some office, hotel, retail, and restaurant uses. Development in the area includes 25 Kent Avenue, the first ground-up office industrial building in this area, which is located cater corner of the project area. Other development has generally been limited to hotels, such as the 22-story William Vale Hotel, located directly south of the project area. The proposed project area comprises Block 2279, Lots 1, 9, 13, 34, part of 15 and part of 30, bounded by North 14th Street to the north, approximately mid-block to the east, North 13th Street to the south, and White Avenue to the west. The development site is one lot within the project area. The project area contains a mix of commercial and industrial uses, including event space and eating and drinking establishment and bowling facility, as well as open storage. The proposed development site, Block 2279, Lot 34, is approximately 12,500 square feet and has 120 feet of frontage on North 13th Street. The site is currently vacant. The proposed development is a seven-story, approximately 60,000 square foot, 4.8 FAR building, containing nearly 50,000 square feet of office and retail space and nearly 10,000 square feet of light industrial space. The building would contain retail on the ground floor and the cellar. The cellar would also contain 18 bike parking spaces. The ground floor would also contain one loading berth and a lobby for the industrial and office space. The second floor would contain the light industrial space that would have access to a freight elevator, and office space would occupy the upper floors. Outdoor terraces would be provided at the second and sixth floors. Oops. To facilitate this development, the applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to designate the project area as an industrial business incentive area and two CPC special permits. The zoning text amendment would establish a new IBIA in a zoning text map. A project within this area can seek two special permits, one to modify the underlying FAR and building envelope, and another to modify parking and loading requirements. In order to increase the available FAR for certain commercial and industrial uses above the underlying two FAR for permitted uses, a project must provide up to 0.8 FAR of required industrial uses, which are a set of light industrial and manufacturing uses that can more easily co-locate with commercial uses. By providing this, it unlocks an additional two FAR for incentive uses, which are permitted in M12 districts today, with the exception of hotels, retail, food, beverage, and entertainment uses. The applicant is proposing a 4.8 FAR building and will provide the 0.8 FAR of required industrial uses, as well as two FAR of incentive uses. As a condition of the floor area special permit, the underlying building envelope would no longer apply. Instead of the sky-exposure plane, a contextual envelope encouraging a loft-like building is required. The maximum base height would be 75 feet, and the building could rise to a maximum height of 110 feet after a 10-to-15-foot setback. The proposed development adheres to this envelope. Per the special permit, the first floor would be primarily used for permitted uses, such as retail establishments. It would also contain a lobby and one loading berth with access to a freight elevator. The entrance for the loading berth would be located on North 13th Street with a curb cut for the entrance. The second floor would contain the 0.8 FAR of required industrial uses. And the third through sixth floors would feature office space with flexible floor plates. The seventh floor would also be used for the incentive office space. The applicant is also seeking a special permit pursuant to 72963, which allows modification to parking and loading requirements. Current M12 parking regulations could require the production of up to nearly 180 parking spaces and three loading berths. The applicant is proposing to waive the off-street parking requirement and reduce the loading berth requirements from three to one. The community board held a public meeting on November 13th, 2018, and voted on December 11th, 2018, to approve this project with conditions. And the vote was 31 in favor, zero against, and zero abstaining. Conditions include ensuring that accessory retail space for industrial uses is not accounted as required industrial space, that the industrial space created as part of the project would be rented at 20% below market rate, and that the applicant provide proof that the William Vale Hotel parking garage has spaces available and would be sufficient for the proposed development. The land use committee also voted that DCP allow the special permits to be applicable in M11 areas, as well as release the North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Plan. The applicant submitted a letter to the community board on December 11, 2018, stating that the proposed development would generate a peak parking demand of 28 vehicles between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. PHNA reviewed public information regarding parking located at the parking garage at the William Vale Hotel and noted that it had a utilization rate of approximately 70% with approximately 70 spaces available at 2:00 p.m. The letter also included documentation from the property owner stating that there is sufficient parking in that garage. We have not yet received the Borough President's recommendation for this project. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Duac.
Thank you. So the cellar area is going to be used for?
It'll be retail, as well as a bike parking and mechanics.
So I think that if I had to guess what the Borough President's recommendations are going to allude to, I think he would want a portion of the cellar space allocated for industrial use, too, as we're waiving the parking requirements, which is freeing up the cellar space.
I can convey that to the applicant and they can respond to that.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Deloos.
I'm just wondering if there's been any response thus far from the applicant to the community board's conditions or recommendations?
Not at this point, but they'll be prepared to speak to that at the public meeting. They have responded to the point about the parking, but we're on the other two, yeah.
Commissioner Levin.
I noticed that the area that is, that we're designated as the IBIA, the project area, is actually, as you pointed out in your presentation, quite a bit bigger than just this development site. And it particularly includes the building that fronts on White Avenue, which actually is currently being demolished.
Right.
So I wonder if you know what is intended to go on there and whether that is yet another subject area for this kind of a special permit?
So the application does state that there are known plans for this project to also pursue the special permits. And that, yeah.
Okay, so we don't know anything specific about what they might be coming in here for?
It would be a similar program than what we've been seeing with these special permits.
Okay, so, and it's, and that actually is the full block frontage on White, so it's...
And it wraps around as well.
So it's essentially double, it's significantly bigger than this site. So we'll have, you know, with 25 Kent and 12 Franklin Street, and now this, and the demo building next door, we've got a whole cluster of activity around these special permits, all of which is highly prospective. Because, as I understand it, nobody has a tenant yet, right?
That's correct. Nothing public at this time.
Okay. So I'll be interested at the hearing to hear the applicant's thoughts about the competitive environment for this, who they think they're going to get for tenants, particularly for the, I mean, my focus is on the industrial space, because I think that's the part we really need to incentivize. I suspect that the office space the developers have a handle on. So the more they can tell us about their intended plans or the realistic options for finding good tenants for the industrial space will be great. Who will manage the building? Will it be someone who is capable of managing a mixed-use building like this? Can industrial work at this small scale and on the second floor with just one loading berth for the entire building? And is there going to be, who will be the reviewer for compliance with the industrial space, as I believe is required in the zoning text?
Right.
So fleshing out for us at the public hearing about the, how the industrial space is really going to be good industrial space will be helpful.
I'll convey that as well. Thank you.
Other questions? So we'll hear this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The eighth item on the agenda, page 288, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 12. Our presenter is Eileen Fader.
Good afternoon, Commission. This is an application by Congregation Pazzai Belzabeth Monca for a zoning map amendment to establish a C24 commercial overlay over a portion of a block in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn. Proposed action would facilitate the continued operation of a commercial banquet facility located within the interconnected cellar area of two existing school buildings. Project area is located in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 12, shown here. The project area is in an R5 district, which continues to the north. And there's also close proximity to several industrial districts and commercial overlays in the vicinity. The area to the north of the project is generally mixed-use in character. Along McDonald Avenue, which is a major thoroughfare, industrial and commercial uses are predominating. To the west of the project area is a mix of commercial, residential, and industrial uses. And further east is the predominantly residential neighborhood of Kensington. The F train emerges from below ground immediately east of the project area, and the project area consists of seven tax lots on a single block. The frontage along, the project area has frontage along McDonald Avenue, Avenue C, and Dayhill Road. Lots 6 and 82 are the development site and outlined in red here. They are owned by the applicant and comprise the majority of the project area. They are improved with two private religious schools, both subject to bulk variances, previously granted by the Board of Standards and Appeals, and they're interconnected through the cellar level. The remaining lots, Front Avenue C, and are outlined in blue. Lot 6, located at 600 McDonald Avenue, is a 28,000-square-foot corner and through lot with 40 feet of frontage on Avenue C and 655 feet of frontage on McDonald Avenue. It was expanded pursuant to a BSA variance, and the building contains over 60,000 square feet of floor area for an FAR of 2.2. The building is 35 feet tall and rises without setbacks. Lot 82, located at 317 Dayhill Road, is a 10,000-square-foot interior lot. The rear line abuts Lot 6. The school on this lot was developed also pursuant to a BSA variance and is four stories tall and contains over 30,000 square feet of floor area at an FAR of 3.15. The non-applicant-controlled lots include three family walk-up apartments, two family buildings, one of which contains a basement-level prayer room. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to apply a C24 commercial overlay over the existing R5 district in the project area, shown here. And the proposed action would permit the legalization and continued operation of a commercial banquet facility located within the interconnected cellar area of the two existing school buildings. The facility would be used as a commercial banquet hall for events beyond those accessory to the school. Currently, commercial uses are not permitted as of right in the R5 district, and in total, the facility would contain about 20,000 square feet of commercial use, if approved. The community board held a public hearing on December 19th of 2018, and on January 22nd, they voted to approve without comment this application. The Borough President held a hearing on January 7th of 2019, and on January 24th, recommended approval with conditions, the conditions being that the CFO be revised and include the requirement of no less than 50 parking spaces for the facility. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Deloos.
Did you attend the hearing, the community board hearing?
Unfortunately, I did not.
Okay.
I can, I don't know if the applicant did. I can ask them to speak to that if they were the president.
That would be helpful. Not getting any information from the community board makes it a bit challenging. Okay.
Less challenging, since it was unanimously in support.
Well, but just understanding the current impacts, for instance, under the use, and especially given the Borough President's recommendation about amending the CFO with the parking spaces, I think that would be helpful information. Do we know if anyone from the community board is expected?
I don't know if there is anyone expected. I do know that anecdotally, we have heard that these types of uses, certain commercial uses that you don't think of normally, like banquet halls, are very much in demand, given that this is a growing population, lots of marriages and babies and things. So the, you know, this sort of space is in quite big demand. So imagine that had to do with the support that was at the community board.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Well, that was essentially my question, too. So at the, at the hearing, I would love if the applicant could sort of take us from the BSA variance that was issued that allowed this school facility to be created, to the addition of the 400-space banqueting hall, which sounds like it has a function...
It's also the lunchroom, if that helps.
Well, yeah, but lunchrooms aren't typically also set up for catering halls. So how do you go from variance to allow a school, to lunchroom that turns into a catering hall, to the Department of Buildings issuing a permit that they shouldn't have issued in the first place because the catering hall shouldn't be in an R5, to are being asked to legalize this? There are lots of sort of alarm bells that could go off at various stages in that that evidently haven't gone off, presumably for the reason that you, a little too, which is that they have been operating in the neighborhood, and if there were a problem, we would have heard about it. But I guess I would like to hear the reverse. How is it that a 400-space catering hall hasn't generated the kinds of objections that we would normally hear about? I mean, I realize it's hard to prove a negative, but...
There have been objections at the BSA, but I think that the applicant can speak to the broader story. I'm not as aware of those interactions that have occurred.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess my questions reveal a basic skepticism from a land use and zoning perspective, but appreciation for the realities on the ground, as our chair, a phrase our chair likes to use, that may push us in a different direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'd note that the questions that both commissioners raise stem in part from the fact that this is currently an unlawful use and we're being presented with the, that fact. Commissioner Cirillo.
And I'm just going to throw in the mix that it's very likely, the problem, too, is you need a consumer affairs license. That would be not possible to get under the existing. So even if there was an attempt, it's an unlicensed activity in addition to being not zoned properly for the, right, it's an impermissible activity that's also unlicensed. So there's a variety of things happening.
It just speaks fine...
Duac.
...that the community board had no recommendations. So I guess it serves a community purpose in that area for that.
They did vote to approve. They just didn't have any, this was, I think, written before the...
They voted to approve?
Yes.
Without?
Without any context, yeah.
Which would kind of...
That says something. I'm just looking for the color.
Right.
Story.
That supports that. Got it. I'm willing to accept it.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we'll find out the answer, I hope, on Wednesday at the hearing.
Okay, the ninth item on the agenda, page 309, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permits in Brooklyn Community District 2. Our presenter is Anthony Grande.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jonah. It's Jonah. Sorry.
I thought I was off the hook.
No, sorry. Just...
That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commission members. This is an application returning for pre-hearing from 550 Clinton Partners and 539 Vanderbilt Partners. The applicant's who seek a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, and special permits to facilitate an approximately 237,000-square-foot mixed-use development with a total of 286 dwelling units, as well as office and retail space at 809 Atlantic Avenue. In addition, also the restoration of a landmark church at St. Luke and St. Matthew. The proposed project area is within Community District 2, along Atlantic Avenue, near the nexus of Fort Greene Prospect Heights and Clinton Hill. Just as a quick refresher, the proposed project area, which is shown in red, is located at the southern portion of a block bounded by Fulton Street to the north, Clinton Avenue to the east, Atlantic Avenue to the south, and Vanderbilt Avenue to the west. The area is predominantly residential, with Fulton Street and Vanderbilt Avenue serving as local mixed-use retail corridors. And Atlantic Avenue... as local mixed-use retail corridors, and Atlantic Avenue containing pockets of mainly automotive uses. To the southwest is the 22-acre multi-phased Pacific Park development, and directly to the west is 470 Vanderbilt, a full-block site that includes a mixed-use development on Fulton Street and the adaptive reuse of a building on Atlantic Avenue. Just a few blocks further west is downtown Brooklyn and the Atlantic Terminal Transit and Retail Hub. The area is well-served by public transit with access to the Sea Line, one block to the north, multiple subways, and the Long Island Railroad, Atlantic Terminal, and several bus lines. The project area is mapped with R7A and R6A, medium-density contextual districts, a portion of which includes a C-2.4 commercial overlay along Atlantic Avenue. R6A allows up to 3 FAR for residential and community facility use with a maximum height of 75 feet, while R7A allows up to 4.6 FAR with a maximum height of 95 feet, one mapped within an inclusionary housing area. The C-2.4 commercial overlay allows up to 2 FAR for commercial uses, and residential off-street parking is generally required for 50% of the dwelling units and optional for income-restricted units within the transit zone. The proposed development would occur on an L-shaped 21,000-square-foot site along Atlantic Avenue, consisting of two lots occupied by auto-service businesses and a bar and restaurant. In order to transfer additional development rights to the project, the applicants seek to merge lots 1 and 59 with lots 5, 7, 8, 10, and 51 to form a single zoning lot, which is outlined in blue. Lot 10 specifically is an approximately 27,000-square-foot lot occupied by the individual landmark, Church of St. Luke and St. Matthew, and the remaining lots are improved by four to seven-story residential buildings. The development site marked in red would receive up to 70,000 square feet of development rights from the landmark church and the aforementioned lots, while there would be no zoning changes being proposed to the transfer sites. The applicants propose a new 29-story mixed-use development with 286 units, including 86 affordable units, and 34,000 square feet of commercial floor area, consisting of ground-floor retail and offices on the second floor. No loading berth or off-street parking would be included in the project. And then based on the square feet generated by the zoning map change, approximately 40,600 square feet or 58 dwelling units would be permanently affordable pursuant to option 2 of the mandatory inclusionary housing program, while 28 more affordable units would be voluntarily provided on top of Mih. As part of the proposed 74-711 special permit, the Landmarks Preservation Commission issued a report in support of the proposal, and specifically in response to a recommendation by LPC to maintain a view of the church as belfry. The development's height is limited to four stories on the corner of Clinton and Clinton Avenue, and the tower bulk was shifted towards Vanderbilt Avenue, also to preserve and maximize the view. To facilitate the proposed project, the applicants are requesting a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment to designate a new Mih area, and two special permits to modify bulk and parking requirements. The applicants propose to rezone the R7A-C2.4 district, as well as the R7A and C, R, excuse me, R6A districts, to an R9 district with a C2.5 commercial overlay, which would permit up to a maximum 8 FAR for residential use within an Mih area and up to 2 FAR for commercial use. The applicants also propose to rezone a triangular sliver of the R7A-C2.4 district to an R6A district to more closely align the zoning with two three-story residential buildings. The applicants also proposed, as I mentioned, to designate an Mih area pursuant to option 2, which would require that 30% of the residential floor area be affordable at an average of 80% of the area meeting income or AMI. The applicants also seek a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section 74-711, which would require the commission to modify, sorry, which would allow the commission to modify bulk regulations except floor area for zoning lots containing the LPC designated landmark, and also allow the transfer of development rights across district boundaries to the development site. As part of the special permit, the applicants seek a series of bulk waivers due to the site's irregular size, and also to support building and floor plate efficiencies. I'll just quickly summarize those waivers. So the first waiver is for tower-on-a-base regulations, which would require a certain percentage of floor area in the base of the envelope, as well as a minimum street wall A waiver for the inner court and inner court recess provisions. A waiver for commercial and rear yard requirements to support space specifically for a double-loaded corridor on the tower portion. A waiver to reduce the minimum window-to-lot line and lot coverage requirements for tower-on-a-base buildings within R9 districts. And then lastly, the applicant seeks another special permit pursuant to 74-533 in order to allow the commission to waive parking regulations for developments with at least 20% of income-restricted housing. Following certification, Community Board 2 voted 31 in favor, 7 opposed, and no abstentions to approve the application, with the condition that the below-market-rate apartments be affordable to households earning no more than 60% of AMI, and that the developer apply to the Department of Transportation for loading zoned for the planned retail establishments. Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams also voted to approve the application with a few conditions, which I'll summarize. First, to lower the income bands for the proposed affordable units, while maintaining the proportion of affordable units being 30% of the total. Second, to increase the number of family-sized affordable units. Third, to implement outreach efforts specifically to lower-income seniors. To partner with a local nonprofit that can serve as the administering agent for the affordable housing. Increase the size of the proposed cultural use. Partner with city agencies, specifically DOT and DEP, to enhance the streetscape and address any loading concerns. Integrate a variety of resiliency and sustainability measures. And then lastly, to retain Brooklyn-based contractors and subcontractors similar to the LBE, MWBE programs. On December 13, the applicant responded in writing to the Borough President, and in that letter, which I'll just quickly summarize and is attached to the briefing package, the applicants clarify that on top of the 58 permanently affordable units subject to Mih, 28 additional units would be provided, amounting to 30% of the development's total units. Also, that the development, the applicants provided some supporting information on the unit mix breakdown specifically for the affordable units, and stated that the income bands have not yet been selected, while there is an intent to work with a local administering agent, and a couple organizations have already been contacted. Furthermore, the applicants expressed an intent to meet and exceed the city-based standards to hire Brooklyn-based contractors. And then with respect to sustainability and resiliency, the applicants are considering a range of measures to achieve LEED Silver certification, including deeper tree pits to support the long-term growth of street trees, blue and green roofs to absorb stormwater runoff, utility submetering, and a high-efficiency HVAC and water system, among other measures. Lastly, in regards to the proposed cultural use, the applicants have selected the Jack Theater Company, an experimental arts group based in Clinton Hill nearby, to occupy that space of the development. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
I'll definitely be interested in the hearing, on the hearing, if the applicant can speak more to the commitment for the additional affordable units, in particular the depth of affordability, length of affordability, and of course, their openness to Mih option 1 versus option 2, given both the community board and the Borough President's recommendations. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I certainly share that curiosity for Wednesday. And I'd also like to ask, I hope we can have explained to us on Wednesday, how the two buildings relate to each other. It is being planned as two separate buildings, as I understand it, but with the appearance, really, of being a tower on one long slab. Is there a separate residential entrance for the four-story building? How will the affordable units be distributed between the two buildings? How do the two buildings function together?
I'll convey that, those questions to the applicant to make sure they can respond. And I would just say that the, the purpose of the separate separation of the buildings relates to the existing tax lot structure, how you have two tax lots under different leases and two separate owners who are, who are part of the, the application.
Yeah, so maybe if they can explain to us how they're going to navigate those restrictions with their desire to build this building. And then also, I am curious about the zoning lot lines in the rear of the building. It looks like we're creating a split lot condition with the way the R9 is being mapped over some of the R6A buildings. It looks like some of the buildings are the, not part of the development site, but the buildings between this and the church are going to end up with a split lot condition in their rear yard. And why is that necessary for this project? And how will the waivers that we're being asked to approve? Well, how will the building relate to the rear yards of the adjoining buildings? How will they be affected by the waivers that we're being asked to approve?
Absolutely. I'll convey that. And just to briefly touch on part of the question, here, a portion of the R9 district would overlap with the, some of the lots.
Yeah, 53, 56.
The, my understanding, and the applicant team can elaborate on this, is it relates to the, the depth and the floor plate of singling and the need to, otherwise, it would also affect the amount of floor area for the building. So if it was adjusted to an 80-foot depth rather than a 100-foot...
Okay, but they're not taking any development rights transfers from those? The TDRs are all coming from the buildings closer to the church, right?
They're not. It's just sort of the, if the depth was maintained at 80 feet, it would, the R6A would overlap slightly with the, the development site, which would affect some of the waivers, as well as the floor area generated.
We can take a closer look at this, but just eyeing this, it's not clear to me whether it, that overlap into lots 53 and 56. Looks like it might be 20 feet, which is less than our 25-foot. So it may have no impact on those lots at all.
Okay, but they're going to end up with a large building in their backyard. Maybe I should put the question in another way.
That's probably the more...
How's that large building going to relate to their backyard?
Commissioner Tease.
Hi. I noted that the community board mentioned something about loading docks, and what's the, what was the concern that was raised? And is that something we should be thinking about, given how much commercial retail space will be?
So the, my understanding, the concern relates to the, the lack of a loading.
Yes.
And the, the board was interested in seeing a loading berth specifically for the, the retail establishments. We, we, the applicant can elaborate and provide more information, but one of the, the reasons why there isn't a loading berth relates to just the, the amount of traffic on Atlantic Avenue and trying to kind of minimize issues of traffic and congestion.
I mean, they have other frontages, though. I'm just wondering if, if, in fact, the amount of, for the amount of square footage there I'm requesting, if in fact, you know, how does that space get, get serviced? You know, with merchandise? Are they going to have to pull over anyway? And are they raising an issue that is worth consideration?
Okay.
And I have another follow-up question. You know, it's sort of the, thinking about the city's sustainability goals and, and, you know, issues of, of access in a place where we have transit, you know, the issue of bike accessibility comes up, and I'm, you know, always pleasantly surprised at this area of Brooklyn, how many people utilize City Bike, which is here, you know, and how bike-friendly this area is, and they are asking for, for a waiver on, on the parking. You know, and I know that our bike parking requirement, you know, they're meeting it, one per two dwelling units, but, you know, it's, it's notable that, that bike parking and the ability to store your bike safely is really a determinant of bike usage. And so I wondered if there was any opening to think about offering residents more bike storage here. It seems like if any community or neighborhood is, is well-served, you know, by that, it would be this one. And given that this, that they're requesting a waiver on parking, it would make sense to provide an alternative. And so I'd just be interested in what the developer, you know, how they might respond to that.
That's a great question that I'll be sure to convey. And actually, the applicant's representative is here.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, we'll see it again on Wednesday at the public hearing.
The 10th item on the agenda, page 383, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map, zoning text amendments, and city map amendments in the Bronx Community District 11. Our presenter is Justin Lamorella.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. This is application for Blondow Commons as far as zoning map and text amendments and a city map change, and this was certified by the Commission on October 15, 2018. The applicant is Blondow Equities LLC. Just for some background information, this proposal is for portions of two blocks on Blondow Avenue in the Westchester Square area of Community District 11 in the Bronx. The rezoning area is shown here on this map in blue, and is part of the Westchester Square neighborhood. To the east lies the New York City Transit rail yard for the 6th train, and to the north is the Hutchinson Metro Center, as well as the Amtrak and future Metro North rail lines. The Westchester Square stop at the elevated 6th train is located just to the west, along Westchester Avenue, and that's approximately 600 feet from the rezoning area. There's also many bus routes that run through this neighborhood, along East Tremont Avenue, Williams Bridge Avenue, and Westchester Avenue. Zooming into the site, you can see the rezoning area here outlined in blue, and the development site is in yellow. The portion of Fink Avenue that will be, that is proposed to be demapped is shown in pink. This is part of an M1-1 area today that consists of mostly light manufacturing, commercial and vacant uses. There's also parking, auto-related repair and storage, warehousing, and other storage uses as far as the larger M1 district. Just to show you a photo of what Blondow Avenue looks like today, this is from, if you were standing on Ponton Avenue and Blondow Avenue, looking southeast towards the, the development site. The proposed development is for a new nine-story, 200-foot... The proposed development is for a new nine-story, 213-square-foot mixed-use building with approximately 228 units of affordable housing. There will also be approximately 2,000... Sorry, 20,000 square feet of commercial retail and about 2,000 square feet of community facility space provided. The proposed development is not located within a transit zone, and so would provide 225 accessory parking spaces at the cellar level. And the garage to the parking would be accessed via an entrance on Blondell Avenue. This shows a proposed rendering of the development. It would have an FAR of 4.6 and rise to a maximum height of 95 feet. After a base height of approximately 75 feet, the building would set back 15 feet along Blondell Avenue before reaching its maximum height of 95 feet. In order to facilitate this development, the applicant is proposing to rezone these blocks and lots from an M11 zoning district to an R7A district with a C24 commercial overlay. In response to questions raised by the commission at the certification review session, the slide shows which uses would be conforming should the change in the zoning district be approved. Block 4134 Lot 1 is a development site and is currently vacant. The only lots that would not be conforming are Block 4134 Lot 14, which is owned and operated by New York City Transit, and Block 4133 Lot 63, which contains a warehouse today. All the other lots would be conforming with the change in zoning. And I'll also note that Block 4133 Lot 10, which is non-conforming today, it has a catering hall on the ground floor and residential above, would become conforming if the proposed actions were approved. As a related action, the applicant is also seeking a text amendment to Appendix F to designate the project area as a MIH area with option two. This would guarantee that 30% of the units average 80% of area median income. For this project, that means that 69 of the units would be permanently affordable. The applicant is also seeking funding from Department of Housing Preservation and Development and Housing Development Corporation through the Mix and Match Program. The median household income in the area is approximately $44,000. At certification, the commission did ask a question about why option two was selected. The applicant can explain further at the public hearing, but they did state that option two would provide a wider range of mandatory affordable housing options to those in the middle-income bracket, and also that the proposed development would average 72% of AMI. They also plan to include 10% of units for homeless veterans. The applicant is also proposing to change the city map to eliminate, discontinue, and close an unbuilt portion of Fink Avenue between Blondell Avenue and Waters Avenue. And this change is necessary to facilitate the proposed development, as this mapped but unbuilt portion of Fink Avenue runs through the development site. This project was certified on October 15th, 2018. Community Board 11 in the Bronx held a public hearing on December 10th and voted on December 20th to disapprove with seven in favor, 16 opposed, and two abstaining. The Bronx Borough President held a public hearing on December 27th, 2018, and issued a recommendation to approve with conditions, including to provide secondary access to the parking garage via Cooper Avenue, that New York City take over ownership of Cooper Avenue and Fink formerly Grant, and maintain the road beds, that the remainder of Blondell Avenue not be rezoned, and that the applicant explore ground floor commercial space for a charter school. While this proposal falls completely within Community District 11, Community District 10 does sit just across Blondell Avenue from the proposed rezoning, and so they also asked to review this application. Community Board 10 held a public hearing and vote on January 17th recommending disapproval with 12 in favor and 19 opposed. And while the conditions of the borough president all fall outside land use purview, the applicant can explain on Wednesday how they are responding to both the community board concerns and the borough president conditions. So in conclusion, the actions to rezone the area and apply for MIH will permit the development of approximately 228 units of affordable housing, 30% of which would be permanently affordable. And as I stated, the applicant team will be present on Wednesday to answer any questions, and I'm happy to answer any today.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Surlo.
Just in the context of this proposal, this is sort of a silly question, but can you go back to the slide that shows us the mapped but unbuilt street? Okay, that's a good one. There were two, but this is perfectly fine. I'm just wondering if we have any idea that normally when we have a mapped but unbuilt street, it's usually in some open space. But this, to me, looks like there's actually a building that's built on the sort of southwest corner. That's... So somewhere, there was a building built on a mapped and unbilled street. And I just wonder how that happened without it actually having to be demapped at that time, unless it's a timing issue when the maps were created? I don't know. But this is interesting to me, because it's a little unique in one respect.
Yes, it is curious. I'm not sure of the history of it and could look into it.
Yeah, I mean...
But you do bring up a good point, that that building would also be... Become further in compliance by the demapping of Fink Avenue.
Yes, I mean, for sure. I just found it interesting, since, again, most, you know, unbuilt mapped streets are in some sort of natural state, even if they're in a place that you don't understand how it happened. But obviously, there was construction on this site, so it's... And I don't know how old that building is, but I just wondered if we had any sense. But don't please... It'd be interesting if it was easy to find out, but it's certainly not anything to struggle researching. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Marine.
I won't say that. Commissioner Levin wants me to tell you all, guys, how I danced my young years off at the side street, which is the building that's on the street itself.
Dancing in the street.
Dancing in the street. So my question...
To Landmark, is that the answer?
There you go. It did provide a lot of entertainment for those of us that live in the community. My question relates more to the Gant and Cooper avenues, which I believe is Lot Number Eight and privately owned. Have they been able... Has anyone been able to identify who the owner is? Because I see that the rezoning contemplates all the way east towards Westchester Avenue and includes those as possible development sites. So is there any way of identifying who those owners may be or what the case may be with that property? Because that is one of the concerns of the community.
Right, and that has been well researched, and there is no record that we can find or that the applicant could find of who is the owner of that street. It is considered a street of record, but there's just no history of it. I believe that this dates back to before this area was part of the city, so it may be part of Westchester's history.
My understanding at one point was that the Van Zandt Building, which is the building on the corner of Westchester and Blondell, actually had some kind of ownership, so maybe you want... You might want to research that. I know that it's been a bono contention for the community for a very long time. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I just wondered, did you attend the Community Board Levin hearing? Can you offer any insight? They just filled out the form and checked the box "no," which is not ever really very helpful for us.
Right.
Do you have any insights into what was behind the vote?
Yeah, so I did not attend, but I do have some insight that... And they raised a few issues, one of them being that around the parking spaces and that tenants would be required to pay for them, even though these would be affordable apartments. They also cited crowded public transportation, lack of local schools, there being no other comparable buildings in the area, that the developer wouldn't commit to hiring unionized labor, as well as some local opposition to the rezoning.
Thank you for those notes.
Marine.
I do have another question, and thank you, Commissioner Levin, relating to the parking. You know, we noticed... I noticed that it's basically a one-to-one ratio, and I also noticed that the Westchester Avenue bid recommends having more parking, and I'm going to assume that's because of its customer base within the Westchester Square area.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
More comments? Then this will go to public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, for future votes on January 30th, staff have prepared reports for the Williams Bridge Road rezoning. The Batanzas Six, which I will note that you had a letter in your package, I think, two weeks ago, that gave you some additional information, and that the applicant also filed an amendment to their MIH selecting, I believe, option two. Option one instead of option two, and that was...
One and two.
One and two, sorry. And my understanding is that that was in response to things that they heard during public review. The Frank White Memorial Garden, Block Four Contribution in Kind, which I believe Commissioner Surlo has recused on, the former Parkway Hospital rezoning, and 134-01 20th Avenue. Okay, for post-hearing follow-ups, we have the Joseph Daniel Wilson Memorial Garden expansion, the Bushwick Alliance 63 Stockholm Street. And then finally, but definitely not least, 41 Summit Street rezoning. I believe the Brooklyn office just wanted to give you a quick update. You've received some materials and...
We actually will make a more complete presentation on what our recommendation is on this at the next review session. We have a fair bit of time, because the clock doesn't expire until early in March.
Yeah. If there were any further questions, I think we'd want to take those back.
Just to note, one of the items you received was a borough president's recommendation that followed the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
At the next review session, we'll have a presentation and discussion of it.
Any other business?
I think we're done and out of here.
That concludes the New York City Planning Commission review session for Monday, January 28th, 2019, and the time is 4:04.